Well, this is the wrong minutes, the minutes for May eighth. Okay, I've already done this. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We have been in a paperwork session which we've just come out of, and we'll get this meeting started with everybody please step, stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Always one in a bunch. Okay, we have a review and approval of consent items. We have an AP manifest for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents, and from May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents. The payroll manifest for May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, seventy-two thousand, thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents, and for May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and four cents. We have the April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three treasurer's reconciliation and one elderly exemption denial. Are there any requests for additional items or other business?
Well, I have an item that I'd like to add for later today. I would like to make a motion that we add an item to discuss the school request to release impact fee funds. I'll hand this to you later. He's doing the notes. I'll just hand you this.
So we have a motion from Ms. Queen to add that?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Mr. Ginn, and all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
We have a motion from Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second from Ms. Queen. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Public input will occur no earlier than six forty-five P.M. And the business? We have approval of the May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Anybody have any changes?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the May eighth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Queen and a second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Yep.
All right. I'm guessing this is what a lot of people might be here for. This is our public hearing for our metal detection policy. As required by law, we have to have one. So, Ms. Queen, Kleiner.
Jesus, I do that.
Good evening. So, over a month ago now, we brought forth a policy to you in draft form on metal detecting. The policy actually had a few different parts to it. It had a form that residents could fill out online if they had lost something on town land. That is important because if the residents filled out the form, reporting that something was lost, and someone came and filled out a permit for metal detecting, and then brought back that item that they found, we would check the log to see if a resident had reported the item as lost. So, there's three parts. There's the lost items, there's the policy itself, and then there's the metal detection permit. There seems to be some miscommunication that this is limiting metal detection altogether. This is not doing so. This is, however, requiring that a person comes in and fills out a metal detection permit, which we would then forward to the chair of the board that the land is under. So, whether it's conservation land, whether it's land that's by the historical society ways in, whether it's recreation land, the permit would then be forwarded to them for their comments. If it is historical land, that is where there is some limitations that would occur. But for most town land, there would be very little, other than filling out the actual permit, and we would approve it. So, the main limitations is some historical sites and cemeteries, and cemeteries are defined by RSA. So, that's the policy. If anyone doesn't have a copy, I'm happy to forward these around and make them look at them. We did post, I think it's been posted in a few places. It's been posted on Facebook. It's been posted in the newspaper for residents to give their feedback.
Is there any members of the public that might like to talk on this? Yeah, sure. Come on up.
I'd also like to do an introduction if it's okay, just so they explain what it is.
Okay, yeah. Ms. Queen will do a brief introduction.
How are you? Nice to see you.
See ya.
See, democracy, right? Does that work? All right. I just wanted to give a brief introduction so maybe diffuse some of the questions about the metal detector policy and how it came about and why it came about.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry to jump in, but it just might help a little bit. So, I want to tell you what it is not.
Okay.
It is not against metal detecting.
Okay.
Even on public land. It is not that. The policy was initiated when discussions began to determine if dollars could be raised to perform an archaeological survey of the area of land across from the old town hall. The area would be historical, not only due to the fact that that was the original site of the town of Litchfield. There is a cemetery there also, potentially. Well, we know there is. But it's also, we also wanted that survey for Native American artifacts as well. So, that's where this metal detector started maybe to come into play. So, it's also the largest untouched muster ground fields in New Hampshire. So, the metal detector policy was discussed as a way to keep away potential swarm of people going onto the site because now it's being known in the public. It's an archaeological survey going on there, so it wouldn't disturb the site. So, but that was to help before and during after the surveys were done. So, the reason is, and this is our thought behind it, was the townspeople do own the property, and it is not for one person or persons to find things on it and sell it or keep it for personal gain. If the town owns it and the people own it, one person shouldn't be going there and having benefit. So, that's the way we saw it belonged to all citizens of the town. So, what it is, is it's a metal detection policy. I went out and I explored metal detector policies in New Hampshire, and I looked at what other towns were doing. It seemed to be intertwined a lot with the lost and found, and we don't have a policy here in case somebody loses a ring at the park or whatever. So, if somebody is on town property, which happens to be recreation, and they find a ring, we wanted them to come back to see if somebody claimed it, you know, owned it, so you would give it back. But if nobody claimed it, you get to keep it. That's really what it was intended for. So, I think that's really what I'm going to have. Basically, it was to help protect the historic site, and then if anybody had any lost or found items.
Okay, you answered my first question.
Can you say who you are, please?
Oh, Rich Trevane, Seven Bristol Way. You answered my first question, why have a permit? I'm not against the permit policy. I've detected, I'm fifty-seven, so I've detected for fifty years of my life. Nashua requires a permit. You go to the Park and Recreation, that's where you get the permit. You go to the trailer at certain times of the day, Park and Recreation issues the permits. But what I'd like to do is what caused this? What brought this about all of a sudden? I mean, I've been detecting Litchfield since I've lived here for twenty-four years. I have detected the old muster field. Nobody knows I'm there. You leave no sign of where you've been. I have detected the conservation area. I've detected a lot of private lands here. I don't buy, I don't get my finds and I sell them. I have them all in my basement, and I think I saw Steve Calloway. I gave him a tray of my finds, oh God, fifteen, seventeen years ago, and they were on display at the Historical Society. My big thing is not, I don't want to have my finds end up locked away somewhere. I mean, I have quite a few finds, not just from Litchfield, just around New Hampshire, and I don't want them locked away. I want people to see them. And eventually, you know, hopefully not soon, but when I pass, they're probably going to go to the New Hampshire Historical Society. Mr. Colby, he had a huge, I've seen the collection, a huge arrowhead collection of Native American artifacts, and I used to talk to him and walking through the fields and stuff. I've never found an arrowhead in a field. But I just wonder what caused this? Has someone been damaging these? Because I know where all these foundations are. I know exactly where they are. I know one of the first foundations on the Litchfield-Londonderry line is, I won't divulge where it is, and I have detected there, and back then, you know, they had no money or anything. I'm in there to find old nails and stuff like that and put it in a display case. I mean, I don't even, I don't detect very often now. I'm too busy. But what caused it? I mean...
What caused it is, we have public meetings, and all of a sudden it's emerging that there's an archaeological survey going on, and we have found people over there that were hesitant to leave.
So, there were metal detectors over there when they were digging the archaeological survey?
Well, I can have the person and someone here in the back. I don't know if they were actually there then, but as the site was being...
Because that's known. I mean, people that metal detect, you know, one, I never go to near cemeteries. You don't go near cemeteries.
Yeah, that's another...
And you don't go near if there's an archaeological dig going on there.
It was during the same period of time. I was working across the street.
There was an active dig going on there and someone?
Yep. The archaeological people had been there, and a gentleman came in, two people came in, and I told them they can't go down there.
Okay, long as the dig's going, right.
It's an archaeological site.
Correct.
And it was known to them, these people. And so, they said, "Oh, we'll be all right." And they went down anyways. So, I contacted the town, and the town sent somebody over there, and then that night, although they said they didn't get anything,
Right.
They posted that they found a bunch of stuff.
Okay. The other thing, too, you got to realize, is a lot of these people post that stuff, but it's not, they probably didn't even find it there.
They may not.
And they do it for attention, a lot of them. But I heard, I spoke to one gentleman who's on one of the committees, and it broke my heart. He said that they tore apart the foundation down at the conservation area. They collapsed the walls. Is that the case? I mean, they pulled the stones out?
I haven't heard of that.
And everything. Only thing I can recommend is, I'm not against the permit process, but if you put it in the hands of the Park and Recreation, you know, they could handle that, and you don't want it to drag out to, you know, someone comes in, they want to detect. They don't want to wait a week or a week and a half. I mean, if it's a historical site, the Park and Recreation said, "No, you can't go there." And with the permit process, too, it also keeps track of who's out there. So, if I'm out detecting, say, over there, and you come up, there's all these holes dug, "Hey, Richard, are you out there?" "No, but I did see these people out there and so forth," out of towners. They could be out of towners and stuff. But I've known about all these historical sites. I just keep my mouth shut. That's all I got to say. I mean, I'm not against the permit process, but I don't want it to be banned, metal detecting to be banned, you know?
It's not going to be banned.
No, I'm not, I don't want it to be banned, but I'd like to see the permit, if it's a permit process, as easy as it was in Nashua. You go to the Park and Recreation, ask them for a permit. They can say, "Oh, where are you going to go?" And hopefully the guy's honest and say, "I'm going to go down to the Griffin School in the field there and detect," or the old, you know, someone's, some public land and so forth.
Did they have the same, similar policy where, like, the lost and found, if you found something?
Well, that's...
Now you're going to get to be honest.
I have found a ring. I did find a ring. It belonged to a gentleman over in Londonderry. I found it at Max Field, and it was an old football championship ring. And I actually found, I traced back who owned it, and I met the guy. I remember met him at Mel's and returned his ring to him. I just kept it quiet. I don't want attention drawn to myself and stuff. But hopefully people are honest like that. And when Mr. DeRosa was alive, I've detected all of Mr. DeRosa's fields. And he said his wife had lost a tennis bracelet years and years ago, and I never found it. And then, when Barbara Frank was alive, I detected her whole property there, and she also said she lost a bracelet. I never, never found it in there. But, you know, but I'm not, I just want to make sure it's, I don't want to see metal detecting banned. You know, permit, that's fine.
Yep.
If you're going to detect public lands. Private lands?
And you sound like you're very respectful of the properties and whatnot.
Absolutely, absolutely. I've detected your land, Kim.
I know you have.
When, not, when Rich owned it.
Yep, yep.
And I didn't realize, someone had told me that up on the muster field, there were actually still bodies up in there.
Steven.
Because I always, always told by Barbara Hale, I mean, Ms. Hale, that they were all gone. They were washed away with Hurricane.
It is separate.
Luster field, there were no battles up there. No one died up there.
No, 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 no battles, but there was a cemetery up there.
Right, right across from the Historical Society.
Yeah?
A cemetery has been found.
Oh, they have found it?
Yes. And that's part of, the town hopes in the near future to be able to do a phase two archaeological survey. Phase one is complete, and use ground penetrating radar to see just what is under there. But the bodies didn't wash down the most part. They were in the eighteen fifties because of the great floods that were happening, the changes in the course of the river. The Selectmen began conscripting young men in the town during the summers to exhume the bodies and stones and move them to the three cemeteries that we know today.
Oh, okay. But not the one behind the church? I think I spoke to you, and you said there's no bodies.
Oh, no, there are bodies.
Oh, there are bodies. There's a two-story.
And yes, they did move some out there, but that was a cemetery that was set up when the church was built in eighteen forty. So, any stones there from eighteen forty on were always, and there's just a few old slates that were brought up.
Because I have found, I won't divulge where they are because I don't want people to know, in the woods of Londonderry and Litchfield, home cemeteries.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
They're in there. They wouldn't know that they're just stones sticking up. You wouldn't know it.
Yep.
I guess that's all.
Cheaper to bury them there.
What's that?
Cheaper to bury them there.
But I guess that's all I have to say. I just don't want to see it banned.
No, it's not banned.
I just have one more comment. It's not meant to single out anybody.
Oh, no, no, I didn't.
It's like that gets, enthusiasm, you know, enthusiasm spreads, right?
Yeah.
And anybody would come in. So, we're really just trying to guard that.
Oh, no.
That's what started this process.
And nobody should be digging an archaeological slate if there's a dig going on or in a cemetery. There should not be any digging in a cemetery at all. But I don't think we've ever had, have we had that problem here? Or the people?
Not that I know of.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's all I have to say. I mean, just like I said, I'd like to see the process streamed and not have to drag out for two weeks for someone if they want to go out.
I believe it would...
Some kid with his grandson wants to go out and metal detect on the playgrounds.
They'll go to the town administrator, but then depending on what property, it'll have to go before that board, which could be the rec meets twice a month, conservation meets twice a month. So, depending on when you get it, you might be out of cycle until, you know?
Yeah, see, I mean, I would like to see if someone like, say, you and your son or someone wanted to go detect down at Griffin School. It's public land. Now, if you need a permit, you got to go through that whole process.
You got to wait to commission in some of those.
Whereas they could go to the, say, the police station and say, "Hey, can I get a permit? I'm going to go down to..." And the permit usually was good for a year. You'd have to get it each year. And that way, he could go down to detect, you know, they look for pennies or dimes or whatever they do.
I think that could, that could be arranged to make it more.
Yeah.
Depending on where the location is.
It seems like an awful big process to go through for someone to metal detect, go through all these committees and taking up a lot of people's time.
It's throwing a big net on a lot of things where there's actually specific, I agree with that. There's the historical part, cemeteries, we want to maintain and track.
Absolutely.
But it's hard to single those out individually, so you have to see all of the town. And I think the town administrator, if you say, "I'm going to go walk in the woods behind town hall," or police station, she should be able to say, "Yeah, that's..."
Well, the big thing is, is you have a permit process, and you know who was out there. And if something happens, maybe someone sees something that went on, it probably wasn't them, you know? Because I'm ninety, ninety-nine percent of the people that I know that detect have ethics. I mean, they follow, they won't, cemeteries, archaeological sites, give prior permission for people's private property and so forth.
To expedite it, maybe we can look at it. We know the five buildings on the New Hampshire State Register, probably are historic, first time it's a state. We have a list in our master plan chapter, historic sources, of what is historic, that they shouldn't, so there could be a list that if they tell you where they want to go, that you could look at, you know, make a quick decision. Maybe, but again, we talked to legal, and they wanted it out of your hands, really, right? They didn't want it up to the town administrator. They wanted the board.
So, I think there was some concern over property where it's defined by RSA. So, the recreation land, it's defined by RSA that it is
It is worth a mention.
Under the control of the Recreation Commission. So, they didn't want us to, the town or myself, to grant permission that the Recreation Commission would not be in favor of. So, even if it's the chair, I mean, if the Recreation Commission felt that they were acceptable with the chair being the one, maybe it's, you know, a quick email to the chair, I think it would be up to the board of commission on how they felt. Does it need a meeting and a full vote?
I know the way, I ran the rec, I would want a full vote. I'd want...
But we could also vote to grant you the permission to do it.
Yeah.
So, we could give permission to you as a vote on the recreation.
Yeah.
So, on the last page of that article, because the RSA is broken up by group. So, you're saying let the individual groups give information, right, to you?
If they wanted to grant the authority, they could.
Yes.
So, really, the big one is historic. That has to be.
No, it's banned.
Cemeteries.
Investigated right now.
It's being investigated now historically.
So, we can look at ways to expedite it.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
All right. Yes, definitely.
Cemeteries fall under the jurisdiction of the elected cemetery trustees.
They have to. I don't think you can dig in a cemetery.
No, you don't dig in a cemetery.
To metal detect.
Yeah.
It would just be a flat, no. It'd be a flat.
Yeah, I mean, that's common sense.
Yeah.
You don't say, "Hey, I'm going to dig in a cemetery." You don't do that.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
We appreciate your input.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I think maybe a tweak of this a little bit to streamline the process, and we'll bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Anybody have a problem with that?
That's his feedback.
Oh, hello.
I have a question, too, just a suggestion.
Okay.
And perhaps on the historic sites, rather than have the Historical Society, you might want us to participate in the review for a permit, but perhaps it should be under the jurisdiction of the Heritage Commission, since they are well aware of the historic works of most sites in town, and that's what their job is in terms of determining what they're building. It's historical.
It's a public meeting. The Heritage Commission's a public meeting, where the Historical Society is, I hate to say it, a more of a club, a private. So, the Heritage Commission keeps it all in the open for the public.
Right. And again, if they were, if the Heritage Commission didn't have a meeting, and it was going to be a long time, and the chair wanted to give me permission to grant...
Go ahead.
You know, I see no problem with that.
But you just need the list.
Yeah.
Current list.
Because every house you go to touch could be heritage, and that could be a separate issue. All the, all this stuff, you know what I'm saying? Can't rip the house down till you change it. Where did it all go?
Okay. Yeah, come on up.
Good evening. Joe Stapleton, Twenty-One Mark Lane.
Hi, Joe.
I'm a new member of the Historical Society. Moved into town a long time ago, but I'm not an old townie like some of the names that I see here, you know?
Oh, thank you.
But I am very interested in making sure that the historical things of Litchfield stay in Litchfield and we maintain our ownership. And I disagree with the fact that I'd like to see a streamlined process, but I don't think a five-minute process is enough to cover the properties that we own in this town. We're not talking about nineteen oh five Oklahoma. We're talking about seventeen forty-three Litchfield, New Hampshire. There's a lot of things here that could go away that we should not, that we should know about. And I think a streamlined process is great. It shouldn't take a month or two, but I think the right people should be asked, if it's the Heritage Society, the Historical, or the recreation which you were part of, you know your property, or you should know your property. And I think they should be in the loop. To give a permit immediately, I think, is really not the proper way to go. I think we own the town, all of us, and we should have a right to oversee what properties get looked at, who walks on our public property for the sake of looking for things, artifacts, which belong to the town. But that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. You see the gentleman back here? He said it for you? Okay. Anybody else?
Right there.
Yeah, come on up. Of course you can.
All right. I'm Jordan Fletcher, Nineteen Harrison Drive. I'm kind of nervous. I've never really done this before, and I'll make it, you know, short and sweet.
Your support just showed up.
Yeah, thank you for coming up. So, I did, so I'm seventeen. I'm still a Campbell student, and I did a senior project, since I'm a senior, and I did my senior project based on melatectin Litchfield, because it's been a hobby that I've been interested in for about four years now. It's coming to the fourth year. And I know it's not as much as, like, other people, but I feel like it's a good amount to know, like, what's going on and, like, the history in Litchfield and stuff. And, like, as being like the young age I am of melatectin, I kind of get, like, weird looks, you know? It's not really a common thing to see someone this age, you know, melatectin, and being so interested in the history. But, I mean, I enjoy it, and that's a lot of matters. But the project I did, it was basically from start of September to basically May, I detected Litchfield to get exclusive permissions, and then any finds that I found to donate it to the Litchfield Historical Society. And they were really nice, and they worked with me to complete this project, and I say it turned out really well, find some historic possessions that go back to the eighteen hundreds. I found it really interesting and a great experience to do.
Show them your great find, Jordan.
Yeah, sure. I can show it.
He brought one of his treasures that he found on Richland's Alice's lawn.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, I don't know if I should, pass it around?
Pass it around.
Yeah.
It's an eighteen thirty penny, correct?
Yep, eighteen thirty major and large cent. And it was found at that, I don't know the name. It was the, which house was it?
Missalous Alice.
Yeah, which goes back to a while to years.
Next to the pool?
And it was crazy because it was a very last-minute find when searching, you know? It was coming up to the last couple of weeks of the project, and I was basically stressed out trying to find something that'd be worthy enough to donate, to make it look like I'm not a liar of this project. And I'm very happy that I found it. And, but the whole project in general wasn't for any finds or anything in general. It was for just to learn about the history of Litchfield, just because it's a town that I've been living in for my whole entire life. And the history is so fascinating from what I knew even before the project began. And just the whole entire time, I've met so many great people that have let me go on their permissions and detect. And the thing is, and it's not, you know, Litchfield's not the only place I've gone. I've gone to Londonderry, Hudson, you name it, all the towns surrounding. And I've found many great things, and I've met many great people. And the, like, I usually go onto private permissions, so it's usually a knock on the door and ask. I never really like to go on, like, public lands, like woods or anything, just because, you know, there's rules and there's laws, and there's people that care. And I wouldn't want, you know, to look out my window and just see somebody trespassing into, like, my farm field or my yard. And kind of lost my train of thought, but...
You're doing fine. You're doing great. Doing fine.
And to dispel any notions that the Historical Society is against metal detecting, we are not. And Jordan was a perfect example of that. He came to us and said, "I'd like to do this as my senior project. Could you get permission from people who own historical properties for me to do this? And in the end, I will donate these items to the Historical Society." And so, we were happy to do it for him. He had a great time doing it and learned a lot.
Yeah, and I, well, I think the whole Historical Society, because I could not have even done this without them, because they were a huge help from stuff that wanted me onto their permissions. And they know that, they really trusted me to let me come on, and I really appreciate it. And it was just a great opportunity overall. And this is a hobby that... And this is a hobby that, you know, like I said, from the past four years, so I like to continue to do this for as long as I'm interested in it. And I'll still, if, you know, once these rules come into Litchfield, which I am totally on board with, I think it's like unacceptable to go and, you know, destroy history that we have here, you know, like ripping down foundations and stuff and going into cemeteries that we shouldn't be on, you know? Like, it's really common sense for, to not go into these places and detect, just because it's so disrespectful and it's just not how it should be. And I think these rules will really demonstrate and show, you know, like, it will be good to set boundaries and I'm on board.
Well, you did a great job, Jordan. And the whole town should be proud of you.
And I would suggest, since you knew at this, that you get ahold of Mr. Trevane, who is a very conscientious metal detective guy. Pick his brain, because he is someone that cares and he is right, 99% of the people are good.
I'm gonna record that was not my penny. Hey, how you bought us up?
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. I hate computers. Sorry, guys.
We good on this? Okay. All right.
Formally close it.
Formally close it.
Formally close it, all right. We'll take a motion to formally close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lynch, second by Mr. Weber, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries straight to zero zero. Public hearing is now closed on this. We will work on this and we'll get the final draft for everyone and hopefully it'll be satisfactory to all parties. Next up, we have a presentation, the Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool.
Mine won't be as cool as that last one.
Investments, she should have money with her, right? We just had a penny.
We just had a penny.
An 1830 penny.
1830's penny, that's, that's a good one.
Give my back, everyone. My name is Beth Galpern, I'm with the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool and I will refer to that as the pool, not to stretch that out every time.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me. I'll follow along the marketing flyer that you have been, Kim provided with you, to you. So 30 years ago, we're celebrating our 30th year. The pool was established by legislation due to local town officials, school officials and legislators saying there's some banks going under at the time, this was late 80s, early 90s. We need to protect our taxpayer dollars and we also need to get a little competition from the banks. And New Hampshire became aware that there were other pools across the country. The first one started in Pennsylvania, which is 42 years old now. So we're a little younger than that. And our focus is first and foremost on the security of funds, it's got to be. They are, it is taxpayer money. We also have a liquid product, put money in today, take it out tomorrow. And we also like to provide a competitive yield and rates right now are just wonderful for our pool customers. As of March 31st, or as of Friday, our rate is 5.06% for investing.
That is good.
We have a AAA rating by Standard and Poor's and that's based on our investments as well as the management of the fund. Again, I said same-day liquidity, unlimited transactions and as many accounts as you would like. And I know, having been a trustee, that trustees of trust funds have a lot of accounts. So there's no limitation there. We compound interest daily, post it monthly. There are no out-of-pocket fees. The management fees that are assessed to the pool by the program manager are taken out before you see the rate. And professionally managed by PFM Asset Management, that is a company in Pennsylvania. All of my marketing material will refer to Pennsylvania because my home office is not registered with, you know, the SEC or any federal agency. But I live in Candy, New Hampshire. Previously, I'd lived in Londonderry for a long, long time. I am the local program rep and one of the reasons that the company, PFM Asset Management in Pennsylvania, recognized was we need somebody who knows New Hampshire. And I've spent most of my career in government banking at banks that now no longer have that name, but they still exist, if you know what I mean. All right, so our safe, our focus on safety is we invest in only A-rated or above securities. That could be treasuries, agencies, commercial paper, but they have got to be at least A-quality. Another thing that allows us to have liquidity and safety is we invest in only short-term. Our weighted average maturity as of March 31st, and I use March 31st because that's been audited and passed through our compliance, was only 27 days. So these are short-term securities, high-rated, so if you need your money tomorrow, we are able to liquidate the securities. Our rates follow the Fed, it's not the Fed rate plus any amount or less of basis points, we just follow along what the Feds are. And two years ago, after COVID, we were one of those non-competitive, as were banks at the time, we had a .02 rate, not very attractive, but as the Feds increased their rates, we did as well. And at the end of 2021, going into 22, we had about 200 million on deposit of New Hampshire clients. And as rates progressed, at the end of 2022, we were at 500 million, which was an all-time high in the state, and went up to 617 million this year because the rates were so good. We do not have FDIC insurance because we are not a bank. When you deposit into the pool, you are purchasing that proportional share of securities. I have to tell you, there is a possibility money could be lost, but in the 30-year history, never has a client lost money. And that's because the focus is on those high-quality investments as well as short-term. We have tracking and reporting and our online account system. We can set this up so that the treasurer and the finance director have the ability to open and close accounts, make transfers, but Kim may want the ability just to have view only and, you know, no other authorities. And that's the way we could set it up. As far as if you send us new ACH instructions or if you make a transfer out, whoever has those permissions gets an automatic email. So everybody knows where the money's moving to. And I'm sure you've heard, there's been a lot of communities that have dealt with ACH transactions that were supposedly issued by an employee and the money is going out, it's not going to the employee account, so we verify those. And we also have multi-factor authentication, which I'm sure we're all used to dealing with. You sign on and you get sent a text message or email to put in a code. So that's another security measure. We have an awesome group, five client services members that are dedicated to the Northeast. So they will get to know you and will again verify that they are speaking to the right person through, you know, if you call us, we're gonna ask you what your password is, that type of thing. What else? Flipping over, the oversight right now is under the New Hampshire Bank Commissioner and that's the way it was set up back in 1993. It's a little funky that way, there's no other pool in the country and there's pools in most every state. But that's the way it was set up in New Hampshire. And over the last few years, the banking commissioner said, I am struggling with this, it's a conflict for me. I take an oath to represent New Hampshire banks, but yet here I am overseeing their direct competition. So last year, a Senate bill was introduced and it's now become a House bill, it's gone through committees to, and we're waiting for the governor to sign it, to move the oversight from the bank commissioner to the state treasurer. And the state treasurer has agreed and that's typically where local government investment pools fall, under the oversight of the state treasurer. Again, PFM Asset Management out of Harrisburg is the program administrator and investment advisor. Our auditors are Ernst and Young. And our custodial bank, where all the funds move in and out, is with US Bank. And our board, if you're following along, the regulatory authority is, again, with the state banking commissioner, the state treasurer and a representative of the Department of Revenue Administration. And the RSA provides that some of our larger municipal associations get to appoint members to serve on our board. So we have two members from the New Hampshire GFOA. We have a member from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, the county association appoints a member, the school boards administrators appoint a member to serve on the board. And because this was under the oversight of the bank commissioner, there's two bankers that serve on the board, appointed by the New Hampshire Bankers Association. So that's our setup and I am the local rep. Our client service group members are listed on here. I'm trying to think of what else I can tell you. Trustee of trust funds, the one thing we do not do is the MS 9 and 10. I know. That's why I stopped running for office after two terms. But I understand there's a, the New Hampshire, there's a New Hampshire portal that makes it easier for trustees of trust funds. And we're just seeing a lot of interest from trustees as well as, you know, regular town, city, school district accounts, but the trustees are noticing our rate is surpassing what they've been receiving over the last year or so. So I'm happy to answer, any questions anyone has?
I see our treasurer and finance director and others back, yeah. Do you folks have anything?
Where are you located?
I personally live in Candy, New Hampshire.
No, well, but it's a bank.
We're not a bank, it's an investment company.
So how would you get checks there?
We do not, we do not, you can deposit by check, but it's a long process to go through the lockbox. Meantime, you're losing interest. We do things through ACH, so you would have your bank just providing ACH or you could do a wire, but your bank would probably charge you for that.
Yeah.
You would still need to maintain a bank account.
And the funds aren't FDIC insured.
They are not.
How do you folks get paid?
Through our investments and we have a management fee, which is about 23 basis points right now, and that's taken out before you see the rate. So we would be at point, or 5.29? But you're netted out at 5.06 after our fees. And again, it's been 30 years that the pool's been in existence and a penny has not been lost. And during the years of COVID, when we had .02%, PFM Asset Management waived its management fee to keep the rate positive. And PFM Asset Management is the program administrator for 18 pools across the country.
So if I understand correctly, you'd still have your bank account.
Correct, for check writing capabilities.
From there, you could ACH money, you know, in lump sum
Right.
From your trustee accounts to deposit them in the pool to make the return on your investment.
Correct, and we would.
Also be down for accounts that are held by the treasurer.
Oh, yes.
So the town could invest where it's liquid enough that you could get money back should there be an emergency.
Oh, absolutely, it's same-day liquidity, if you get a wire, transfer in or out, we do not charge fees, but your bank might charge for incoming or outgoing. If you get your wire transfer into us or out of us by 2:00 PM, or ACH is 4:00 PM and that's overnight. But you could have money back that day. And typically, outside of an emergency, you're going to know your cash flow, whether it's weekly payroll or a school payment.
How long has this been around?
30 years.
Duh, okay.
1993. It actually started being formed in around 80, 90, 91. But it was a process to go through, you know, 400 legislators in Senate.
Kim, are you familiar with this, have you seen this happen?
So I have to say that last November, Representative LaSalle is the one that asked us to look into this.
Yep.
So.
I remember that.
We started to do some research, I was at a municipal manager's meeting and met Beth. And she agreed to come and speak. How many towns do you know, Beth?
We have, we have about 1,800 accounts and I can't tell you the exact number of towns, cities or school districts, but we cover town, city, school districts, counties, village districts, conservation commission, libraries, water precincts.
Minor question, when I watch the financial news, I always see FINRA, I see it low on the bottom here, is that an insurance company that backs up?
No, that's the Financial Regulatory Authority, where I had to obtain two licenses in order to. Most of us are FINRA-registered reps.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any questions over? Any more questions?
I like to research this a little bit more and I like the finance group that we have. Karen, Kim, everybody on the backside there, and the elder sitting beside Steve.
I know who you're with.
Now, Kim, did I send you the information statement as well?
You did, so.
That's on, that's on our website.
That is much more detailed.
Absolutely, it has a great amount of detail, it's 21 pages for evening reading. But it tells you how we operate, what we can invest in, what we can't invest in. And this was all worked out through the state legislation and we have quarterly board meetings, we do stress tests every month for what-if cases and we've never had to notify the board that we've been in any jeopardy.
What do you think? Look into a little bit more?
Doesn't hurt to look.
The information statement is on the website.
Well, I think there are some funds.
What's that?
I have a question though, I just want to know how many New Hampshire towns.
That's all we have is New Hampshire towns, yes. The New Hampshire Public Deposit Pool is only for New Hampshire entities.
You said like 1,800 towns, municipalities?
1,600.
Yeah, 1,600, okay.
Just in New Hampshire?
Just in, yeah.
Yeah, we're only, this pool is only for New Hampshire.
But there's, they also do it in Pennsylvania or wherever else, yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, we have 18 other pools, PFM does, but most states have some kind of pool, not necessarily run by us.
So you got 18 different pools and then for New Hampshire, you have 1,800 customers.
16, yeah.
16, yeah, a good amount, a large amount.
Is it clients or funds?
Is it what?
Clients or different funds, if some town could put three different into it, if they broke it up.
And we have, I'm opening 35 trustee accounts for one town this month.
Okay, so that's 1,600, could be multiples within one community.
Correct, correct, could be your library trustee in the town.
Thank you.
And it may not necessarily work for every fund, but something like the conservation, where you have a large amount of money.
Just sitting, just sitting.
Yeah, just sitting to cash in on a return.
Some communities use us as their regular investment account, they're constantly doing investments or we call them redemptions or withdrawals. We're used for bond fund proceeds, we're used for trustees, again, various districts, conservation funds, a lot. And school districts will get their state adequacy money from, and fund it into ours. There's all kinds of uses.
Okay. Maybe look into it some more.
See what funds actually fit well for it.
Yeah, you have the information statement, which I add to your portal. I'll send the information statement to all of you, which is, has much more information than I just.
It's also accessible on the website. And if you become a client, you can actually go in and see. And if you become a client, you can actually go in and see all of the holdings that we have. We just don't provide that to non-clients, but you'll have more access to info. But you don't have to be a client to access the information statement.
Yeah, I came right up. Okay. Twenty-one pages. It's gonna be a lot of pop here. Thank you, sir. Well, I want to thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate your time.
The opportunity.
There we go. Okay, I'm good.
You all, have a good night.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, can you help him out?
She knows how to clear a hose.
All right, up next, we have the 2023 paving plan.
I'll be right back. You can go keep on going, Bob.
Mr. Brown?
Kevin Brown, road agent.
Hello, Kevin.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me.
How's that culvert?
We'll talk about that. First off, I'd like to start, the new backhoe came in. I was gonna bring it up, we haven't had time to register it yet. If you'd like me to bring it up the next meeting, I can. If not, feel free to stop by and take a peek at it. It's big, it's yellow, black tie is fly.
The license plate say AR.
It's clean, it's very clean right now.
Does it smell like a new car?
Does the new backhoe smell different? I don't know. Yeah. But it's very nice and thank you, but we do, we do have it. Secondly, the culvert down on Pilgrim. Basically, to explain it, is six sections of culvert, which is eight by eight by six feet on the inside that are all put together and it kind of goes together like this. And it's supposed to be a clocking in here and that has worn out and come out. So we had, we had a sinkhole, started about this big and you looked inside it about six by eight. As we excavated, it got larger and larger and it turned into a larger and larger problem.
Is this the one we used to have to clean out with the I-beam?
The same, same culvert, yep. So within digging that, this must have been a problem at some other time prior to me because there's, there's a piece of concrete as long as that table and three times as high, looked like someone pumped concrete and they're trying to fill the holes, fill the gaps. But when we took it apart, we have a company that came in and they went inside and they drilled through the bottom after we, after we made coffer dams and stopped the water and they, they put in this, it's hydro grout, which is activated by, by the hydraulics, by the fluid, by water. And it, and it filled up about three feet up the side and down the bottom and then the top, we excavated, grouted the top and then put a membrane across the top. So even if the grout fails, they'll still have the membrane there. So we're trying to do it right this time. It's gonna be expensive, you know, and that's one of the culverts. The second one, the first one, of course, the learning curve, took about a week just to get prepared to go in there and dig it and finish it. It should be done by Wednesday, hopefully, maybe some cleanup and paving later in the week. We do have monies that came in, you guys approved it in January, it came in December for a bridge and culvert repair from the, from the state or federal government, I believe it was. So, state, so Kim and I, you know, spoke about this and we'd like to use that money for that, but we can talk about that, you know, after and then whatever's left over and that maybe make a fund for more emergencies like this, because that's what the money is for.
Is the, is the price still what you said last week?
I, I'm gonna be, be honest with you, I think gonna be around 50,000, maybe a little bit more at the end. The second one should be less because the learning curve is gone, you know, the contractor and myself, the learning curve is gone, so we should be able to reduce that considerably. You know, just different, we started with huge sandbags and then we went to a plate steel, we had a grate and now we, now we know how to stop it and, you know, there's a lot of, hey, we gotta get another pump and let's go get another one, but they don't have anymore, so, you know, driving to Manchester, we're driving to Concord, we're all over the place. But it's, it's looking good and it's gonna be done right, so we shouldn't have this issue in the, in the future. I'm looking to schedule out the second culvert to say August, maybe late July, August, when the water level is lower. Be a lot easier for us to coffer dam it and stop the water while the water level is down. Of course, this weekend it rained, you know what I mean? We go in there and there's three inches more water. But it, but it's going well in, you know, TDD Earth, Ton Dimsmore out of Hudson's doing it and he's doing a fantastic job. He completely mobilized his entire force, forest, because it was, you know, I guess once we dug in, we had another, we had another hole going this way, we had one going this way, so it was a, it was an accident waiting to happen. That's it for that. I'll keep you posted. We'll let you know how this goes. You know, would love to have gotten an okay to get it done beforehand, but it was an emergency situation. Bob came down, Kim actually came down and took a peek at it, but we're on it. And we didn't stop, we didn't stop any of the buses, the buses got through, so. The last what I have is the paving plan for this year. As of right now, and you shared that, correct?
This is on the portal.
All right, so as of right now, we're looking at Albuquerque from Hillcrest to Meadowbrook. That's about proximity, Kevin, you can help me out with that, 19 years old, 20 years old now?
At least.
Yeah, so, so, you know, we're trying to keep our main thoroughfare Albuquerque, you know, in, in the best condition because it's the busiest road in town. The milling of Albuquerque is, Bob, we spoke about this, down by Cranberry, down the very end where Chase Brook goes underneath Albuquerque where we have the little dips. So they're gonna go in there, gonna mill that out, recompact it and then repave that. We have Robin Ave up the north end. We've been kind of putting off on Robin, it's bad, it needs it, but we had the catch basins and the piping, you know, for the stormwater cambered. We had a robot go down there and camera and the infrastructure looks great, so we don't have any infrastructure work that needs to be done, so we're gonna pave that. Ivy's a little short road up, up the north end, it kind of got missed. No water was run down it during the Penetraq water thing, so it was kind of the last road up there that, that needs some paving. And then, of course, the structures, the tack, the trimming. The first quote came out at 1:48, 1:30, so I added more roads that, you know, trying to, it's like a big puzzle, you know what I mean? You get all these roads, you get all these prices, we have a certain amount of money, you gotta kind of puzzle it together and figure out what you can do. So we have Midway Brick Yard from, we have Brick Yard from Pinecrest to just by Nessencay, or Nakemo, I should say. Nakomo, I'm sorry, Nakomo. And then all the tack, the structures and that such. So we bring this for $200,000, $210,040. So I'd like to use $200,000 from the block grant money and then we'll take $5,000 from the road maintenance improvement, that's a budget line, and a catch basin replacement, you know, and that'll, that'll cover the structures that we're repairing while we're paving. It's a total of 2,000, $210,040. Questions, concerns?
Question.
Yeah.
If St. Obane was to go up to Shirley Way, isn't that what it's supposed to do?
Yeah. Shirley, Rocky Hill, Moskovi.
Is it going up to Meadowbrook, the next road over?
So Meadowbrook already has water.
Okay.
And Moskovi's off of it.
Yep.
And I wanted to do Meadowbrook, but because they're gonna come down Moskovi, they're gonna cut into Meadowbrook at Moskovi. And I didn't want to pave it and then have them dig it up and have to repave it.
So is it not a problem? Because you have this on the 2023 plan.
I have it, I, it's, it's, it's gonna be pushed back because of that, because I don't want to pave the road and have them cut into it.
Gotcha.
So that, that definitely was on the list. I have the new CIP plan, I passed on to Kim. I don't think we, we push that out yet, but I have, I have the updated CIP and of course, for this year, I had $400,000 worth of paving, which, that'll push everything back once this paving is done. I have a copy here.
If you build them, you gotta fix them.
Gotta maintain them. We're actually, we, we look good.
No, you do.
Everybody, everybody has their little issues. I know we got some, you know, Pearson and Pot of Talent and where there's a little bit of, you know, it's starting to break up a little bit, but none of it's gotten down into binder and we can, we can patch that.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I have a question on culvert, culvert, catch basins on the edge of the road. As you all know, you drive down a road and then you find this one right on the edge and you hit it, it sunk about three to four inches and it wakes you up as you're going to work. Okay. I'm just thinking, are you working on some, some of the repair?
Absolutely. So, you know, we, we were.
Especially Albuquerque is a few.
Well, we, we were looking at the ones up by, we were looking at the ones up by Hidden Creek. And our local contractor in town maintains that section and I was called by him and told that he was gonna pave from 3A to about April, somewhere in that, in that area.
Well, he does that, he does that.
Yeah, so that was part of, that was part of the agreement when they put the plant in, which is fantastic and it helps the town out, helps me out considerably because, you know, you're talking $100,000 worth of paving. I kind of left those catch basins for a while, hoping that they were gonna get out and do that, and then I got tired of looking at them and I filled them. But, you know, when they, when they come through, they're gonna mill it, they're gonna, they'll, they'll fix those.
I'm just saying Albuquerque up near, how am I gonna say, what's that pond up there, Bob? Half Moon. There's a section there when you go down, you got, you got about three or four.
I inspected those and we actually, that whole section right there is part of, is part of Stormwater Management's cleaning this year.
Okay.
So, so they'll all be inspected. We have the new GIS software coming, where we got the tablets, we got the software. So that's all gonna be part of the inspection package for this year. So we're basically doing, this year, I'm looking at from Hillcrest halfway down past, maybe around Stark and then, you know, we'll see what we have for numbers, if we can push that even further, we'll push that further. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be cleaning and then inspections at the same time and then we have the new software which will, that'll all be available, so everybody can look at it and see what condition they're in. And that's how I'll base my, my repairs for the following year or if they're needed immediately, we'll take care of this year.
Just plug them up.
I'm sorry?
Just plug them up and put a ditch, I would say.
I'm hoping none of them ever get plugged.
So Kevin, I see Robin Ave on here. You're gonna do the section that's close to CBH that give you a fix and all the engineering?
Basically, we're doing from the top of the hill just to the bottom of the hill.
Just the bottom.
Just before Sybil.
Yeah, so that lower piece, we're still not gonna touch until.
That's pretty good.
Well, Sybil, Sybil and the park coming out to 3A were already paved. Because when they brought water in from, from CBH, they brought it around Sybil and they stopped maybe 30 feet up the hill.
It's going up the hill.
So if you drive, if you drive by there, you can see at the very top of the hill where they stopped paving and, and right down to that portion. So we're gonna go, you know, of course, we'll go 10, 20 feet into that new, that old.
But I thought we had engineering issues on that section of the road.
Yeah, I think we did.
Well, the issue was, we weren't sure what the infrastructure looked like. And what, and my, my catch basin cleaning vendor called me one day and said, hey, we have this new robot, it drives into tunnels, it takes pitches and gives you video. And they brought their truck up and, and we drove it from top to bottom and we, we videoed the whole, the whole system, the piping, it all looks clean, because it's such a, it's such a grade, such a pitch, that the water just runs through it and it doesn't sit, doesn't pool, doesn't degrade the, the concrete. So the pipes looked fantastic and that was the issue. We were concerned that we were gonna have to dig this up and restructure the whole.
So remember, we didn't touch it for years because we thought we had to get some money to do engineering on that part of it.
We had no idea, we needed someone to go in there and look at it and that's, and we lucked out where he had, he bought this new thing, he said, I want, I want you to try it out and I was like, I got just the road. So, so it worked out, it worked out really well.
Another side to this too, and that was a fire re-breathers. Back in the day, that was the way to get up to that sub.
Right.
Today it's not. They get it from Albuquerque coming right down to it. So maybe that section is not even required anymore of road because there's nothing on it. That's my point.
You're a selectman, you tell me you want to close. That saves, that, that saved, that saved me.
Trouble every time.
That would save me $36,000 that I could pay something else.
Is there a property that was getting flooded on Robin Ave? No, there wasn't on that area there. It's up around the corner, up to the top, but not at the bottom part. Not the bottom? No, it's always been a, that section from going up the hill to Oak Street, I'll call it, okay? There's only one house or two houses, they got a driveway that comes down beyond that. Different than a dead end if you kill the road, okay? Then you don't have to deal with that section coming down at all. I'm just being realistic. The reason why that was put there was because previous and then everything has changed above it.
I think we're at the point where we couldn't really delete a road, I mean.
I'm just being realistic.
I mean, you know, the people that live at the top of the hill would probably have a problem with that.
Makes for a longer ride to Jeff Lane's ball field.
Right, right, yeah, go all the way around. But I, but you know, in all honesty, you know, having that inspection saved us a ton of money with having to do engineering and.
Yeah, because I know for years, we were worried about how we were gonna fund that, go look at it.
And when I first started, that was something Jack and I spoke about in length, you know, I mean, oh, the pipes, we don't know, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, and when we had, we had the pipes inspected, they, they were pristine, they were, you know, of course, you know, they're, they're of age and it's dirt and stuff, but, but the worst thing you could see is scratch marks from branches and rocks getting pulled down because of what it gets such a head, you know, headway going. But I don't, I don't have any issues with that road whatsoever. I mean, a shim and an overlay will, will make that nice.
Great, that's good news.
Yeah.
Slide down it better.
Lot of black cats in that area.
Black cats?
Yeah, there's a whole family of them, wild.
They might have been chased out of the tunnel.
They gotta watch it now because if you pave it, it's gonna, they're gonna be able to drive down it faster.
Send them down to my house, we got lots of food for them running around down there. You need the eagles from back, I had two of them back there.
So I guess the, the major point of that, I need the approval of the board to spend the block grant money.
I make a motion, we expend the block grant money for this project.
I'll second.
We have a motion for Mr. Lynch and a second for Ms. Queen. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is this a paving plan? Okay.
Motion carries, five zero zero. What's matter?
Do we, would we like a, a not to exceed?
Yes.
Amount?
Two hundred thousand.
We're gonna trust Kevin.
Two hundred and ten.
That's, that's your limit. Whatever I said is what you can do.
Well, I'm gonna be, you know, and straight on, straight up and honest with you, I don't think we've gone, we've, I've never gone over.
You never.
And it's, our contractor is very good to us.
Yeah. We usually end up doing extra rods.
Yeah, they, they kept our rate from, they kept our asphalt rate from last year, you know, and, and I, I know what the rate is by buying one ton, by a ton at a time and you can't buy it for what they're paying, what they're giving it to us for.
Well, I gotta say, who's your contractor and I don't want to know this guy.
So, you know, usually, usually, you know, they say, they say an inch of shim, but it's an inch, it's half inch, two inch, inch, and usually comes under or over, I mean, under, usually comes in under. And if they don't, they call me, hey, you know what I mean? And, and I do have money in, in my, you know, my paving plan, just in case we had a, hey, this, this catch basin fell through or whatever, you know, so I could come back to you and get approval to.
So you're comfortable with the value here though?
Absolutely.
So I'll make, make a motion, we can expend up to $210,000 for the paving plan.
Motion for Mr. Weber?
Isn't it two ten?
Two hundred and ten?
Isn't it already two hundred and ten?
Two hundred and ten thousand.
Two hundred and ten thousand, forty dollars.
And forty dollars.
You're gonna find the forty dollars.
The last motion didn't have a dollar amount.
Do we have a motion?
Apologize to Weber.
Do you have a second there?
So should we pull back the last motion then? Didn't we all vote on yes?
The last motion was made by me for that same amount that just was said that we'll vote it again.
It was already there from the paperwork.
Well, the paving plan, it was, it was part of the paving plan, which paving plan says two thousand, two hundred and ten thousand.
Yep.
My motion was for the paving plan and the sum.
So just to be clear, it's the treasurer and the finance director are going to need the minutes.
For the number?
Meeting in order to document the transfer, so it's easier if we have the dollar amount.
I'll, I'll second this motion.
Thank you.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. I think, I think we cleaned it up.
Okay. That's what I got.
Thanks for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Come on down and see our new yellow piece of equipment.
What are you getting your brush hog?
You know what? I haven't talked to them. Um, it should be anytime. Um, I was thinking it was June, if I, if my weeks went out. You know, with Pilgrim, with Pilgrim, yeah, for the arm. With Pilgrim, everything, I really haven't been, had much attention to any of that, but, uh, but as soon as it does, I'll, I'll bring that up and I'll show you that too. Pick out a good bush and I'll cut it for you.
I got a field of them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kev. Take care.
Take care, Kevin.
Not a request. Okay, so next up, we have our friends from the library, the Library Pavilion Project.
Oh, not again.
Hello.
Hi. How are you guys?
We're doing well, I think.
Good.
Now, what's this about?
What's that?
So we have one, we have it on the agenda, but I don't see any.
I don't see it either. Portal for it. So we're gonna have to go by what you, what you give us for information.
Correct.
Okay. Actually, nothing, yeah.
At the last meeting, there was some discussion about, you know, the number of estimates that we had.
Yeah.
And it was the one.
Yep.
Um, so first I wanted to let you know that, uh, one of the names that was given to us was Dave Kidwell. And he's actually the contractor to do the.
Pavilion?
Yeah.
He does great work.
Within the Novak estimate that we have.
Yep.
So I did talk to Brian again because I knew he had talked to multiple people, um, initially. And so he had talked to five other people, some in town, they may all be in town, I just don't recognize a couple. Um, and they either just didn't ever return his call, or they did tell him that they weren't interested. So, uh, we had that. And then the night Donna and Alan were here, I think Jason Brennan gave them a few names.
Gave us four names and we, um, between Ellen and I, we contacted them and uh, we got a response from Dave, Dave Kidwell, who was part of Brian Novak.
And then, um,
one person we did not hear, was it one person we didn't hear from? One person we didn't hear from and another person said they would give us a quote, but we never received it. So that was three additional ones that we, and then we also emailed Jeff and, uh, Alan did and asked him, um, and gave him those four names that Jason Ed gave us. And he said he'd never had any issue with them. And I went back to him and asked him if he had a suggestion for any other, um, contractors that, uh, did pavilions, and he did not. So.
Not too many contracts is to do that kind of work.
Right. So at that point, we felt that they have done their due diligence and they have exhausted, um, the list that not only they, but the town, um, has. So we thought it was probably at this point, we should bring it by and ask for an exception to the purchasing policy.
Waive it?
I know the town that I worked part-time, they put up a pavilion, it took on about eight to nine guys. Even talked to them about it, okay? That's the way, but the trades are like, they like that now. The trades are out straight. Bob knows he can't paint anywhere. Okay, that's unreal.
Okay. So yeah, we'll need to make a motion to waive the town purchasing policy. Do you have the, the exact amount you're looking to expend? Cause we'll have to put that in.
I brought a copy for you.
Oh, good. Cause they, they'll need that too, right?
Yes, I haven't seen that.
You see it, Bob? Send it over to the king.
I'll just write it down.
Vicky can email it to me.
Did you, I have a copy. Did you need this? Well, this is one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so the only other thing that.
Impact fee amount they need?
And this money's coming from impact fees and.
Yes.
So then there's still a deficit there.
Yeah, we have. So there's one amount of impact fees that was encumbered. And then there's another set of, um, impact fees which are not encumbered. So we're, we're gonna get with, um, Karen, the finance director, and figure out exactly what the balance is, um, and how we should look at funding the rest. And, um, we'll bring it to your next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wasn't there money left over from the SIP, not SIP, the ARPA funds? That was the, the interest earned or something was maybe a potential.
There, that was one.
Twelve thousand dollars from that.
That was one place that we were looking, yes.
Okay.
I thought you said it was like twelve thousand.
It was like twelve thousand in interest off the ARPA.
Right, right, right.
There was, um.
Rest of the impact fees.
What, what does it have?
So it was thirty-one, um, one thirty-five that was encumbered in twenty twenty-two. For the, specifically for the pavilion. And then I believe there's about another seventeen.
Right, close to seventeen.
Seventeen that's left that hasn't been encumbered for any particular project. So if there is a twelve from the ARPA, that, that would get us there.
Right.
Um, the other thing is, we need to look at getting them under contract. Um, and then start working with Jeff on building permits.
You also waive the fee on the building permit on that too, if you wanted to. Okay.
So at this point, do we?
Do they need to, him go, I'm sorry.
No. So at this point, do we need to wait until all the funds are approved before we get the builder under the contract, right?
I would say we start the contract. Let's get the contract going. Because we'll need to write it up, have it reviewed by legal. That's gonna take a week, week and a half. We're gonna be right at their next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, Kim.
They were already in front of the planning board, I believe, right? Didn't you bring the pavilion plan in? I thought you did.
Well, no, we just came to talk to you about what the process was.
Right, right.
Okay, because we were talking about the slab and the rain, where you had to be careful and not to connect to the existing building, right?
Right, right.
You have to do that.
All right, so it was conceptual. So you really still have to come in. Okay.
Yeah. So Joan can help you with that pro, that process and getting.
I'm sorry.
Joan. Yeah.
That's not a legal matter per se. The town can be exempt from their own rules. When you come into site, site plans and stuff like that, as long as it meets the construction requirements, that's blessed. A lot of towns do it that way. Okay, it's not to go to the town for getting an approval per se. You guys can be exempt because you're part of, you are the town. Just like the town doesn't have to go out to the site plan review to get a, a building built. Okay, in many towns around, they don't have to do that. Okay, cause they're exempt from the, they're not exempt from the rules, but exempt from the procedure.
Have we done that in the past?
Yeah, yeah.
Has Litchfield has done that in the past?
Look at the fire department. Fire department didn't go to planning board appro, appro, approval?
There's an expedited planning board approval, or like a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Cause you already have the building, you're just adding on.
Yeah, just waive, waive the fee.
Out of the building, it's a pavilion, right?
Yeah, so I'm familiar with generally if it's a town, the fees are waived.
Yeah, waive the fees is what I, I'm gonna make a motion that we waive the fees for building permit and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay, cause that's money that's not reasonable.
Yeah.
But you're adding on to, you're, you're technically expanding because of the pavilion. So maybe the planning board, just for fire truck, you know, the usual.
For general information, they can do that, but to make, 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 make it a criteria. I don't think they have a, the town, the board, and the selectmen can go one step beyond them.
Yep.
Okay.
I think as a courtesy, they could.
As a courtesy, correct.
Yeah, just for the traffic flow and, cause you're adding more people to that site.
Yeah.
Just so they can park, you know, that kind of thing.
Could you even charge a fee when it's the town?
I don't care about the fee. It's just more, um, we just wanna make sure the fire can get in and traffic flows okay.
Well, I don't think you're gonna be adding traffic, are you?
No, no, because it's gonna be the existing program. It's just space that you need to run the programs, right?
We're already using that space.
No, but are you doubling the size of the space? Are more people gonna be on the site?
No.
That's just really the question. All right, well, I still think courtesy, we probably should.
It's gonna happen.
As the slab introduces a potential wide issue.
The provision, the pavilion is the place to put people that are already there on.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
Cause they're usually on the lawn.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I would say a courtesy visit to the planning board.
Send the site plan.
Site plan, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So.
So I'll make a motion that we waive section two of the purchasing policy for the funds needed for the construction of the Library Pavilion.
We have a motion for Mr. Weber?
I'll second it.
Second for Ms. Gannon. Any further discussion? Then, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Okay.
Great, so we can get with Karen tomorrow. Yep, this week, tomorrow.
Absolutely, tomorrow, come on over.
All right.
We'll have everything all set for the next meeting so we can.
I go into her office now. The older administrator's desk was clean. This one here is a mound of paper.
She's got a lot of things going on.
She's a lot going on.
Which tells me a lot about the past.
So we'll get all the monies and everything figured out for the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, great.
Perfect.
I have two now, so, um, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good night now.
Hang up that picture of the woman outside the children's reading room that seems to be lost.
Oh, I know who you're talking about.
Yes, we've not found it.
Do you have it?
You can't find Florence?
Do you have a picture?
She's at the cemetery, so I'll go up and look for her.
We'll get you one.
Been missing for a while?
I know where she is.
I think so. I think, I don't know if it tied in with the puff bag or the.
Oh, the puff bag thing.
Or putting the addition on.
She never smoked.
Maybe in the, in the town reports. I know what you're doing.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you do.
Going back in time there, guy.
Uh, next up, we have discussion on the farmer's market policy. Ooh, what is this about?
So, um.
Can't be quiet.
If you remember back when we had the conversation about the economic development. There was some conversation about, there were, there are things that we can do within Litchfield that still maintains the rich agricultural heritage that Litchfield owns, you know, holds so dear. So a farmer's market is one of the ways that you can do this. You can allow either an agricultural or commercial property to hold a farmer's market. You can also do it on town property. But generally, when it's done on town property, it's in nonprofit group, not the town that reaps the rewards or makes any money off of it. So we started to look to see, can, can this be done? Are there some properties in Litchfield that are large enough, right? Because you'd need enough room to have the vendors, to hold the parking, to, you would need someone that is agriculturally based, right? So a farmer's market has to have at least two vendors that are considered farmers under, under the, um, RSA twenty-one thirty-four. So this is just a very rough draft of what we would like to propose as a farmer's marker, uh, farmer's market ordinance. It's basically dives into what would be required by the town to approve such a, such a thing. So we look at the fire, we look at police, we look at health inspection. Um, and there's different rules under farmer's markets on food, just selling food and health inspection that is necessary. If it is a farmer who al, is already licensed to sell food at their home base, their farm, they already are licensed at a farmer's market. There's no additional. Um, they would already have a certificate and they could use that. So what do we look for with insurance? Um, and is there someone that would want to do this? Um, th, these generally aren't large money-making, um, events, right? So you're generally charging for the space, but you're also paying insurance on your, on your land to do this. Um, there's upkeep and wear and tear on your land. Um, so this is really about building community, right? Attracting people to Litchfield to see your rich agricultural, um, heritage. And to, to build relationships between the farmers and the community, the farmers and other farmers. Um, that's really what holding a farmer's market is about. It's about that outreach. So is it possible? Um, we don't know. We don't know if it's something that the Board of Selectmen would even be interested in. Um, but we want to start the conversation somewhere. Uh, we do think that there would need to be some site plan review. Um, so we'd need to have probably whomever was holding the market go to the planning board so the planning board can look and see, is there enough parking there? I, is that accept, acceptable for the number of, and sometimes starting out with a farmer's market, it's not all that large of a crowd, right? These things build, um, kinda naturally. Then we know that the chief of police is already designated by another ordinance for whether a police detail is needed. Is there a police detail needed for whatever location is being chosen? Um, we already know that our deputy health inspector at the fire department goes and does a lot of inspections as far as health. And, you know, food and things like that being sold. So a lot of these things, we already have covered. It's not that large of a lift. Um, there's just, there's a few nuances to a farmer's market that, um, and whether anybody would have the land and space and wants to put in the work to organize it. There's a, a lot of information from the UNH Cooperative Extension. They have a whole manual put out just on how to organize and run a farmer's market. I spoke with the former executive director of Greater National American Downtown. He started the national farmer's market. I spoke with him at some length, um, last week. Um, so there's some really good experts out there, um, to help us, uh, do this. And I think it would be something, the other thing is, you're promoting good, sensible, fresh produce at your residents' fingertips, right? So they're not, you know, running a couple towns over to the nearest grocery. Uh, maybe they wanna go down and support the farms and pick up their fresh produce. Um, so this is only a draft. It's just to give you some idea. I'm sure you'll come up with, and I'm sorry, I didn't get it out in the portal in time because I honestly finished it this afternoon. Um, and, you know, had a, a lot of good help. So if you wanna look at it, we'll table it. I'll stick it out on the portal for your next meeting or not. If it's, whatever is the board's wishes.
At one point in time on the rec, somebody came to us and mentioned, can we do a farmer's market at, um, Roy Memorial Park? The problem was is, there's always sports going on and couldn't, you know, put it there. It would be a great location, but it was just, it was always a conflict because there was so much sports going on. What did you say? How many farms, it has to be a minimum? Did you say a minimum?
A minimum of two.
Two.
Which two or more vendors, they get that all the time.
Which the person running the farmer's market can't be considered one of the two.
Okay.
So, um, and we did say in this policy, this is not limiting, right? There can certainly be two or three different people and different land. We kind, obviously, we don't wanna promote market like these in our residential areas, um, just because of the traffic and, um, noise and things like that. So we limited it to agricultural, um, which is a perfect, you know, if you have a farm. Um, commercial and town property in case the town ever found a property that we would be willing.
Cause Roy Memorial's a perfect spot for it. Especially when you go down there on a Sunday afternoon, the healthy kids are running. Imagine having healthy kids running, having a farmer's market there, you're pulling all that healthy lifestyle back into one, one location. Good location for.
The farmer's market, as I've always seen in like a Nashua or Manchester, Bedford, wherever it happens. Okay, it's been within the city's le, the limits. On Main Street, in most cases, I've seen that, where they closed down Main Street per se, and you walk up and down. Okay? Those are, there's a, a yearly events, they're not a, a week, a week, weekly event. Okay? If this is a, you know, a yearly, yearly event, it's not hard to do. Again, the weekly, it's a different subject matter. So that's ever than anything else.
So Nashua's is limited to strictly the grounds of City Hall and the parking lots.
Correct.
Around City Hall. It's every Sunday.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's, you know, limited hours. So it's generally not all day. Generally, they spend part of the morning setting up and they might open at noon, close at. at four, or they, you know, open at 10, close at 2.
And the benefit of those is nice because you've got, it's not just vegetables. They get into meats and everything else, serps, everything else. So, it's, it's actually a good thing in a way.
It is a great...
All of them also have grapes.
Ossis sauce, I've seen soap, you know.
Soap.
Soaps too. But I never seen one with grapes.
We'll just cancel softball on Sundays and do a farmer's market.
You should, it's basketball money.
I'm all for it. Could sleep in.
We're not there often on Sundays, so it's good with me.
I mean, if you have a nonprofit that, you know, wants to take this on and raise money...
Yeah, because then they go before the rec commission and get approval and they're covered by the town's insurance.
And then you've got the parking there too for it.
Yeah.
The parking, the ba- the bathrooms, all that in place.
It's expensive for an individual, like if one of the farms or wanted to do this because the insurance for them is, is going to be high. But it's a, it's a great fit.
Oh, yeah.
For Litchfield. And you can promote people to come into Litchfield and maybe they go to the farmer's market and perhaps they visit, you know, the McQuestionns or, or, you know...
Yeah, whoever.
Some other facility. I just think that's where there's some potential here.
Scouts come in? Whatever, whatever group, recreation type of group, right?
Yeah, I like it. I like the idea.
The only question I would have would be, would be, would this have the possibility of impacting negatively the farms that we do have in town, the McQuestionns?
They close all summer though, right?
The McQuestionns?
Yeah, they're pretty much, they close until corn comes, right?
Corn after, after plants, which they're, they'll be open for a few more weeks. But it's like a month or so before, in between there and corn, and then they run right through.
You've got the, when corn dies, you've got a month, the pumpkins and everything else.
Right, that's why I was asking is, does it have to be two? Because we only have one.
We have a couple a year, you know, just event, it's not that they're going to be here all the time, okay? You're talking about getting groups that, the Maple Farmers, Sunnygrass, or anybody else, bringing in certain things for this one farmer's market. They all do it. Some farmers do, some farmers don't.
You're also hoping they participate in it, right?
Yeah.
Bring down, you know, quick movers, which is easy to sell, or what's actually in season at that time, where there are plethora of it. It's just another location.
And I think, you know, so there's a whole, the state puts out a whole list of farms in, within New Hampshire that will come to farmer's markets, right? So, and the GAD, the former GAD Director told me, you, you need to target and send all these people your information and, and let them know about your new market.
Each farmer does their differently. Some farmers participate in it, some farmers don't, okay? The Trolley Farm and Milford participates in it. He likes going around doing it. Same thing with Sunnygrass or something like that. But it's not something that's every weekend, okay? Maybe three or four times a year because they're busy.
Oh, yes. You can sign up for individual dates, you can sign up for half a season, you can sign up for the whole season. You know, different farmers do different amounts of dates to Selectmen Lynch's point. I think that, to your point, Selectmen Larry, it...
It advertises for them.
You can make sure that your Litchfield residents are promoted, whether it's a booth with just information, so, I'm sorry, the meat, the wonderful meat.
Oh, Normanton?
Normanton.
Yes.
So, maybe you have a booth with order forms or information on them. And then maybe you have right next to it, information on what McQuestionns has for that weekend or... So, I mean, you definitely want to use this as much of a tool as you can to promote your Litchfield businesses.
And every town's changing all the time. A lot of towns do this all the time, like Amherst, Nashua, Bedford, and they can, all the municipal towns that they have, Merrimack, and they all join into this group. In our case here, we have one farm that, we only got really one dirt farm we have still, besides Wilson, and Wilson may join, join in for one day, two days, and that's fine, okay? So, it's all good. It's all good.
Well, it's worth looking into, I guess.
Let's get Judy on it.
Yeah.
Pickleball courts are done, she's probably restless.
She needs something to do, right now?
Right, Judy? She's, she's watching.
All right, you got one girl in your group.
I knew she'd be all for it, yes.
All right, up next, we have accounts receivable disposition for ambulance service.
Our yearly conversation.
Yes. Yearly conversation.
It never goes away, does it?
No, it does not.
So, this, this is, these are bills that the town receives from the ambulatory services. The amount of $9,691.81 is back from 2019.
Wow.
Yes. The full amount currently owed is $36,826. So, these have been worked on by collections for a while and to no avail. So, generally, we bring those forward and we write off, off the items that have been deemed totally uncollectible. We're not getting any type of response. If this amount is written off, there'll still be a balance of $27,000, which we and the account collection agency will still actively pursue.
Welcome to Reality 101.
We have, so, the municipal managers of New Hampshire are looking at this and we're talking about this. We do think that there may be some legislation that we could pursue. But it, this is not just a problem for Litchfield. This is, this is a problem in many communities, especially communities that don't have their own ambulatory service. I also did receive a draft contract from Hudson, which I have not even looked at yet. I just received it. And I'm sure that Karen White and I will have some conversations with Hudson coming.
Okay. So, we need a motion to approve this disposition.
I'll make a motion to approve the disposition of $9,691.81 of the accounts receivable for ambulatory services of 2019.
When you say dispositions, what is the true meaning of that word?
Writing it off.
We have a motion from Mr. Weber.
Second that.
Second from Mr. Cannon.
You don't want to hear it, huh?
Polls in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Chickens.
All right. Next up.
Next.
This is a good one.
This is, so, these are three individuals.
Yep.
That have applied through the Police Department for hawkers and peddlers licenses. They are all from the same company. The ho- the home of improvement. So, they, this company sells doors, roofs, insulation, they do remodeling, they are a home improvement business. The Police Department has done background checks on all three individuals. None of, all of whom are with the company and have been, but none are Litchfield residents. They would be going door to door and giving people information about their company's services.
Hawkers and Peddlers, then, right?
I mean, I don't have a, have a problem with them going to door to door, but if, if a, my concern would be if a homeowner says, I'm not interested, and they pursue and they're a little pushy about it, I don't particularly care for that. So, if we approve these, I would like to maybe have it state that no means no, the first time a homeowner says it. And if it is, if they don't adhere to that, then maybe we revoke it. I mean, I, again, I don't have a problem with it, but I mean, last week, I had a guy from a pest company come and he was already telling me when he was going to schedule my pest service. I'm not getting a pest service.
You wonder how much business do they really drum up going door to, door to door?
That's why I worry about the push.
With today's technology.
Yeah.
I wasn't familiar with the company, but Mr. Brown told me that they are a very large company. They are asking for 12 to 7. Okay, so, I mean, you knock on my door during dinnertime.
12 to 7 what?
It might be 12 noon to 7 at night.
No, no, no.
The legal hawkers and peddlers is what they're asking for.
Five, five o'clock, I think, would be plenty. You don't want to be bothering people during dinner. I agree with you.
They were given a copy of the hawkers and peddlers ordinance.
What does the ordinance state?
So, they are familiar with that and I do not believe that...
It's only for one...
Looked, I was a little concerned that it didn't state...
Yeah.
Times.
This is only good, good for a year, correct?
It is only good for a year, yes. That is, that is correct.
You notice the same address? Shasta Drive in Manchester?
All different addresses.
Newburyport, Wakefield in Manchester.
So...
I'll do the one right there, it's Wakefield.
What's the liability on the property? If they go up to a home that, you know, if they go at 1 o'clock in the afternoon and say the mother's home and nobody else is home, saying, what's, what's the liability if they trip and fall or something or...
It's allowed by statute to do it, as long as you do what you got to do. Whether we like it or no like it, it's up to the homeowner to say that I don't want it.
Okay, so the homeowner says they don't want it.
They walk away.
And they just obliged, they have to go.
Yes. I was, I do not believe that the ordinance states the time that's limited.
I don't think that the time, Bobby, or not, much is...
Maybe something...
The other thing is, it's on you, that's kind of an eye-opener, is very short time that the current residences, all three of them.
Oh, yeah.
One month, one year, three months. I mean...
And I have a feeling that this, so they've been after us, they've been inquiring on these for quite a while. I believe these, there's three individuals, right? I believe this is the type of service where they come in, they do the town, right? They go, and they go on to the next town. Right? So, I don't think they'd even be in Litchfield for a year.
No.
I think they're going to go street to street, see what they get, and that's going to be it. Yeah, they're not going to be going back and knocking on the same door over and over.
Do we allow folks who message us this to hawk up here? I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right, there's two of them from Mass.
I, I do exactly.
But it's the company that they're hawking for.
And I think it's franchised because it looks here like their headquarters is out of Chester, Pennsylvania.
Yes, I believe they are. They're a large company. I mean, they have furnished their motor vehicle records, they have passed a background check. There's nothing, they're not selling food, so there was nothing by...
All right.
I'd say they're probably licensed in about 15 to 20 states.
Really?
Yeah, looking here online about them.
Okay. I don't know if there's a reason why we can't approve it, but I would like to amend the timeframe because I don't think knocking on people's doors during dinner is a, is a proper thing to do.
Well, can we amend the application or do we have to amend the hawkers?
Have to amend the ordinance to do that, Bobby.
That is not in your ordinance.
Yeah.
I don't think we couldn't, that doesn't mean we couldn't ask them.
Correct. We could ask, but...
You can always ask.
I think in the long term, we might want to, but the part about limiting that is, it's such a big umbrella, hawkers and peddlers, right? So, if you limit the time in there, there could be something, food truck or whatever, that might want to go to 12 o'clock at night.
Right, might want to, yeah.
He told, he told...
Might want to be a dare at a festival at 9 o'clock at night.
Food truck could be going door to door, though.
Yeah, but it's, it falls into the same...
Same.
Same license, so, I think that's going to be the tough part.
Yeah. It might have been why you stayed away from it.
Yeah.
I don't think you can get into the time as much as you'd like to. If the homeowner doesn't, doesn't want it there, bingo, it's done.
Is that in the ordinance?
No, but the, but the homeowner does not need to have them there.
No, I agree.
Okay, if they go back and forth, homeowner can probably complain to us that they're coming back and forth and we can address it at that time. That's called harassment.
Who else does this, like a tree green or...
We will watch the complaints. They generally come into the PD.
Right, they're in the P, the PD, all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
They had to have a license to do that, to go door to door? Just the first time I'm seeing this at Woodlow.
So...
Some people don't eat as early as some people.
I mean, we can watch the, you know, complaints. I do think that this is, they're going to move through Litchfield.
Quickly, quickly. And this is what, for roofing or windows and stuff like that?
All of the above. Siding, anything you want.
So, can you put solar panels on a steel roof?
Yeah.
Can you, do you need the 18 inches requirement for walking?
No, but I mean, I'll leave it at that, that, done. It's a legal matter now. So, what do we need, a motion?
To approve the, yeah, the license, yeah.
To approve the licenses for the three individuals.
I'll make a motion to approve the hawker and peddler applications for power home remodeling for Christian Perkins, Sam Kudjuski, and for Team Al Mendalawi.
All English.
I will second.
Wow, we have a motion from Mr. Cannon and a second from Mr. Weber. Very good. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
We'll keep you abreast.
Definitely. We want to know if it becomes a situation.
Yeah, sorry, people.
We have no legal, we have no legal reason not to, so, they have a right to make a living, I guess. Next up.
Just housekeeping.
Memorial Day Parade.
Yes, I make a motion, we... Do something we do every year. I don't know how else to put it.
Go ahead, Kim.
That's all it is, a simple housekeeping, the application came in and we realized that the Board had never officially approved the application, so, that's all we're...
It's going to be 10 a.m. to 11:15 a.m. And if I remember correctly, lineup is at LMS at 9 a.m.
Yeah, between 9 and 13.
And it concludes at the, the Old Town Hall.
Yep.
It's a great event every year.
It really is.
The Historical Society is open that day. So, my husband and I are coming. We're very excited.
Now, for the Selectmen, do you all want to walk or you all want to ride in something?
Hopefully, I'm in the pony with seven granddaughters and a wife.
And I'll probably be walking with baseball and softball.
Nice.
I was going to get a manure spreader, we can all stand in it.
That's last year's joke, Kevin.
You weren't here.
No, I was not.
Fortunately, you only had to hear it once. Um, so we just need to approve this?
Yep.
All right, I'll make that motion, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Approve the Memorial Day Parade application.
Great. I couldn't get anybody to go with me last year.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero zero.
Can't find any helpers.
Next up, we have town administrator reports.
Oh, no, you forgot the most important one.
Oh, it's up top, but it's not.
Study presentation.
But it's not down here.
It looks like a lot of work went in there.
I was.
Okay.
Do you really wanna put this on for the night, you just gave it to a.
Study presentation, I'm sorry, Kim?
So, um, this was a project that is part of um. My course requirement for becoming a New Hampshire certified uh public manager. And um when we spoke last fall, um it was agreed that this would be um one of the projects that I would. Uh, take on, so. A lot of work has been done um in many meetings with all the department heads. So each department head was responsible for updating the job descriptions um within their departments. So you're gonna find in appendix A. A job description for each of the positions that we've included in the study. Uh, the old wage plan, which you'll find um in the second section of the manual. Was done back in two thousand and fourteen, some of it was data back as far back as two thousand and twelve. And it was done in a similar methodology from as what we did here. The New Hampshire Municipal Association collects salary data from all New Hampshire towns and cities. So we all go in and we update the wages of each position that we have. And they store that information for use by towns and cities. Back um when Jason Hope, the town administrator at the time, um developed the wage, the current wage plan. He used that information um to prepare and and make your grades and steps. We used that same information so that we're comparing ourselves with Litchfield against towns that have similar demographics. And by that, I mean, Litchfield fits into what they call a town with a size of five thousand to nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine.
There it is.
So you're looking at other towns of that size group. And the reason being is generally the jobs are somewhat similar. Similar in scope, similar in the amount of work, similar in structure of the administration. The current wage plan kind of included administrative positions, fire positions. The solid waste or transfer station and the highway department. What we found is that really didn't work, and they're really not similar in any way, shape or form. So whether it's the knowledge that's needed or the type of job duties that it has. There really are similarities between the highway department and the transfer station. But administratively, not so much, so we separated them into three different wage scales. Administrative, which is is most of town hall here, finance, town clerk, um building inspector, the admins. Then solid waste or transfer station and highway is their second wage plan, and then fire is its own. Um, and we really did a lot of work um working with former deputy um.
Douglas.
Doug Nichols and um Ed Clancy to streamline the firefighter. So that the all the certifications and all the fifty cents for this and fifty cents for that and twenty-five cents for this certification. Are now into the wage plan, so there's there's no separate. Um, that started to cause a lot of confusion, especially as you're transferring administrations. That may not have been familiar with how the plan was originally set up, so that is streamlined, um will be a lot easier. The important thing to note here, I think, is that what we found was you had a lot of positions that. Were really good, they were right on the money, they were they are fitting in the same um wage classification, they weren't that far off. You had others that weren't, um so your fire. We've talked about on-call, we've talked about um being able to get more existing personnel. Your on-call wage is way off compared to market.
Mm-hmm.
So that's one that we that we would recommend that's to be left at. Same thing for your transfer station um and highway department. Um, some of those trades have really jumped up in market, right? They've become harder to get those people, um and that pushes up the market wage. So throughout, each section has the proposed wage plan, the survey data behind it. And the cost to implement it. And there's some room here, um, you know, how it gets implemented, if it gets implemented, if it goes to town warrant. Um, you leave it to the residents of Litchfield, um whether you did it. Next April first, or whether you did it retroactive to January, um all of that is discussion. Um, we needed a point to pick, um so in order to cost it out, so we just used all of last year. And then you'll see a column on the total page where if you did go April first, because you wanted it to pass town warrant. Um, you could figure that out, that amount out. Um, important to know is the New Hampshire Municipal Managers Association did a survey of all the towns. On average, the towns are increasing their wages over the next year, next cycle. Five point seven to six point three percent. Because of the change in market, because of the number of uh retirements. And because there's just not as great a willingness to join local government um with qualified applicants. So these towns and cities are basically our competitors in the market, um and that's what they are averaging.
So this value here, what percentage is that? It doesn't fall within that five percent, or is it this value and then?
It would, we'd hit about five point three.
So.
Yeah, and that and that's.
So the data is pretty close from the report you did here.
Yeah.
Good.
And to make it even worse, though, the governor, and of course, you've heard, um I I was just talking to one of our local. Um businessmen today who's having, you know, some difficulty getting some permits and things passed. The state, state has twenty percent openings. Um, the governor has proposed a ten percent pay hike for all state employees July first. So. It it is a problem, and there was a study that was just done. And what they've seen is that public sector workforce employees are now lagging in wages. When compared to the uh private sector.
Yeah, there's usually a better benefits package with the public sector than.
That years ago, that would be, years ago, that would be true.
True.
Now it is.
So you will see on the fir- in the first section, there is a breakdown of town in the benefits and their health insurance. I would say that's not as true as it used to be, you are now seeing um private sector. Have better or comparable health insurance to towns and cities.
And retirements and.
The retirements, um, they're. Yeah.
Gray area.
It's a gray area now, especially with all the changes that they've made at the state legislature, right? I mean, they're constant, they're constantly taking away um people's ability to be vested and when you can be vested. And that's always changing, um if you've got a private sector employer who has a great 401K match.
Yeah.
And even that's gone away, too.
That's not, that's starting to fall. Yep.
So it's um, you know, again, I have to thank all the the directors and and the town department heads um. For their help in this.
This looks great.
I think it's uh.
We never knew.
Definitely been a joint effort.
We never had this before.
No, it's a current state analysis of where you are.
Never had this, most towns don't even have have this.
Yeah. Getting all the um job descriptions done, I mean, that's all, that's the department heads and and I think a lot of. Kind of analyzing them to see how they compare to each other.
And each town has their own way of doing things, different than what I'm seeing here. I know where I work part-time, when I left there, it was a sound a sound division. Now it's under the planning division, where zoning is not part of the decision of the building inspector anymore. It's a separate guy you're paying for to be there, so you start looking at that, how often do you get a zoning decision? It's a good question, okay, but I'm just saying, you know, it goes through the process. It all depends who wants what. What I'm seeing here is it's actually good, very good.
To even pull together.
Yeah.
And have it all the information in one place. Um, you know, the current. The current wage plan is is definitely antiquated, and no matter what we do. We have problems when we hire. And and, you know, and Karen White and I will say, okay. Where does this person fit on this low, medium, high?
Correct.
It it, there's no definitions of of them per se to easily fit them in that. So, I mean, this system is is used by many um towns and cities. You know, they are starting on the step according to their knowledge, their experience, their, you know. If they are, this is their first municipal job, they're on step one.
Yep.
I just went through this.
Yeah.
In my, in the town that I just came from, you know, besides here, here's a different story. But I'm working part-time in a town that I was there for twenty plus years, and for what I'm getting paid for, I'd never seen that before. Okay, and I just got a big increase last week, 'cause they're trying to equal it, they're following this. It looked like they're following the same step here, but I fell into that range.
Yep.
And that was big for me, getting that, okay? So it was a big difference.
What also is interesting, in ten years, we've only grown in population by a hundred and ninety-two people.
Well, the death rate's higher, yeah.
Hundred and ninety-two people in ten years.
Flat, huh, but we've done a lot of building.
I know, which is.
It's just equaled out.
Well, you, a lot of the older families, right, the children moved out.
Right.
'Cause I can equate it back to the baseball program, I mean, fif- ten years ago, we probably had over three hundred kids in the program. And now we have a hundred and twenty-something. So your family sizes are smaller.
Breast control.
But yeah, I just thought that was interesting, a hundred and ninety-two people in ten years.
Up the towns that lost four to five hundred people.
Yep.
And now it's a little higher than that, because that's based on twenty twenty-one American census and. So, I mean, now I think we're at eighty-four something, so like a forty-five or.
And we just saw in the legislation, yeah.
Seventy-four sixty-seven, so.
Oh.
You know, like.
Forty-four ninety, maybe?
Yeah, add twenty more people, thirty more people to it.
And then there's a gentleman, the state is going through this growth control stuff, where towns have got restrictions on homes here and there and stuff like that. Now, the state is looking at, why are you doing that? Because people are saying, you don't want this to happen anymore, you can't control growth, what this group is wanting to say. Okay, and that's another story all by itself, but that just happened this week.
You really wanna keep, so, I mean, one of the things that you really wanna look at is. Litchfield's in a great place as far as some of your key positions, right? Um, so you've got a great deputy, um tax collector, um. Who's very knowledgeable, knows her stuff, and has has been working with um Terry Grant. You have an unbelievable um bookkeeper um with Heather Snamen. Who, you know, so eventually, as those jobs, I mean, I'll speak for myself, I'm no spring chicken. Um, as those jobs uh start thinking about retirement, having solid backups. To fill those positions, it's a little different with the tax collector because it's elected, but um that's important. It's a lot, the town spends a lot of money in training these people. Um, it's totally different than the private sector. Can't just walk in, I'm a former private sector employee, can't just walk into a municipal job and think it's that easy.
Important to have a good bench.
Hmm. Yeah, and we have a lot of really good employees, solid.
We certainly do.
I mean, people that are seen outside of here as leaders. Um.
Right.
And that's what, that's when you know, when other towns and cities are calling to bounce things off of them.
You can work with us.
Yeah, you hope they don't steal them.
Oh, this machine died, okay, I'm good with that.
Still have that one motion I made.
Oh, yes, yes, I just was looking at that. So. Is that um?
That's not that.
You good on that?
All those draft sheets there.
Okay, Bobby, what's next?
We have one more item before town administrator and select and selectmen reports. Um, releasing of the impact fees um for the middle school and Ms. Queenan, if you would uh do the honors?
I would do the honors. Okay. Well, I brought this up because we had a draft handed to us today, right, and it was not on the agenda, I don't think, so I. Do you want me to read it out loud, or?
Yep.
No, we don't think we have to, did.
I don't think we have to, I think um if it's a.
General information.
Board would like it transmitted to the the board, the school board. Um. But we have not actually approved the impact fees in public. Um, so there would need to be a public motion to approve that.
So I would say we should approve the impact fees, have the courtesy of having them get our letter. Before we address it publicly if we choose to.
Correct.
Is what I'd be thinking.
I just wanted a discussion because.
Sure.
I was, it was happening, so I don't see the dollar value here anyway, do I? I don't see it.
Uh, no, that's really.
Fifty-three thousand.
Is it here?
Roughly.
I will go back, I think it's your last meeting. Let's see if we can.
I think in a nutshell, legal has has said that we have no reason to not release the funds, however.
Mm-hmm.
There will be a letter accompanying it, and we can deliver that to the school and. Has to be read into their minutes at their meeting. Has to be read into their minutes at their meeting. And we can read it into ours, it doesn't matter, or both.
Yeah, my thing would give them the courtesy of reading into theirs, and if they choose not to, we can read it into ours. That way it would be public. Cause right now it's a draft copy, so I think we owe it to them to let them see it first.
I think if you request that it be read into the minutes, it has to be.
Sometimes they do the reader's digest. They summarize due to the length of some of the correspondence.
That is true.
I know we personally feel differently, but.
Okay, anyways, so.
It was, yes.
Are we making any motion on this, to send it to them?
Well, we have to approve the impact fees first if we choose to. It'd be nice to know the value of that if we were to go.
Notify them and to send them the.
It's got, it was on, uh, how many different?
A lot of different agendas.
I know, you'd think it would be easy to find, right?
Looking for a bunch, I haven't seen it.
I know I don't win a race on a computer, so I'm not even gonna try.
Try April tenth, maybe?
Uh, fifty-two, one forty-eight. April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, the first payment of Litchfield Middle School municipal lease will be due. The payment is in the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. The purpose of this letter is to request the release of fifty-two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars from. The impact fees associated with Litchfield Middle School. These impact fees will be used to offset part of the first payment. Fifty-two, one forty-eight.
That was on oh-four-ten, so.
Now, they've already made that payment too. So this will just go into their general fund and they can.
Well, no, they have to use it for it, so what they'll do is shift their monies around, and then go back and use this money for.
It has to be gone.
Then they have to allocate these funds for that purpose if we give it to them for that purpose.
So that means they would take the money that the taxpayers approved for this year's payment.
And use it for something else.
Use it for something else.
Correct. And then this, these impact fees would have to be used for that.
Which has been my angst all along.
I agree. Give you something, they use it for something else, not for what is dedicated to be used for.
But they also had to make that payment.
And I think Mr. Polansky, um, uh, board member Polansky summed it up. In his statement that he said, perhaps the next time that we ask the taxpayers for money, we ask them for the actual amount.
So Steve, since you have it in front of us, in front of yourselves, maybe you wanna read that motion again?
Now I have to go back and get it, I just went to another page to see. Twenty twenty-three.
Fifty-two, one forty-eight.
Fifty-two, one forty-eight, right, yeah. But it had a nice little, what it was being used for and everything.
Well, it won't be being used for that, doesn't, no.
Well, it is. Still used, it's still used for that payment.
They've already, they've already paid it.
So what happened is, what was explained to us through legal counsel is it's a bottom line budget, so what they can do is they can actually shift the monies. They'll say the monies that they already paid there, they'll apply those to different line items, then they'll take this impact fee and apply it to that item. And line items, they legally have to. So it's gonna be some internal accounting, they're gonna have to do debit side products.
It's the old shell game, find the P.
Alright, so you want me to make the motion?
Yes, please.
Alright, I will make a motion to release. From the impact fees, the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars to be used. Towards the lease payment of three hundred and sixty-three thousand z- thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. For the Litchfield Middle School. These impact fees will be used to offset part of the first payment.
We have a motion from Mr. Gannon.
Second?
Second from Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. I'll say aye with angst.
Yeah, and I really think it should be done for the cause, not for the thought.
Yes. Alright, all those opposed? Motion carries five, zero, zero. And we will send the accompanying letter and ask that they read that into their minutes. Okay, so now can we go to town administrator?
So. We had the auction with Auctions International of five vehicles. And that auction was completed, and the town has, um, recognized. Ten thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. For those vehicles. Some of which I think had been sitting, um. So, uh, at least our road agent is happy to get the much-needed space.
Although we have an ordinance against so many unregistered vehicles. Violation of our own ordinance.
So, they, they have been picked up and, um, we're in good shape. That amount will be recognized into the account for, uh, sale of town property.
And where's that money gonna go? Is that just gonna go into? General fund, or do we have a designated destination for it?
So it, uh, the generally.
It has to go to the general fund if I were.
Generally, it's part of the general fund, it's the account for, um, sale of ta- of town property. Um, and at the end, it would get rolled into your unassigned.
I just gotta shut that.
Pays for the ambulance cost.
Yeah, you lost some, you win some, you lose some.
Well, I think that we have a couple of outstanding items that we have, which is, you know, the library. Tonight, if we don't have the money for that, and also the archaeological. Funds could be used for things like that, not affect our bottom line budget. So maybe we can think about something like that. Wouldn't ask for a decision tonight, but. Something for people to mow.
And speaking on you win some, you lose some. Um, so we had signed up with NRPC for the consortium on power rates. The new rate came in, um, it's about a two and a half cent increase. Um, per kilowatt, so, uh, we are part of the consortium and our new rate will be. Uh, ten eight eight.
What do we figure that will run us, based on our usage?
So, we're looking at it now because some of the accounts, Heather's doing, um, a good job. In tracking it all, and we're getting ready for the budget. Um, so I'll have more information on that, um, over the next couple of meetings as we start to. Get all that information and that usage together. Twenty-five Cortland, um, so I, I did have a call on this just last week. Um, the online auction is set for June twenty-eighth.
It's online only?
It's online at one PM. They market it for thirty days, so they will start. Next week, marketing it. Um, it does go to MLS, which a lot of realtors, um, look at, so. Um, realtors, developers, things of that sort, they'll generally see it there. But we can also put it on our town website. We've worked this out between Paul McInnis, who is a reputable auctioneer for tax-dated properties. And our town council.
Now, I assume that the house is, I know it's blockaded, but is it, there must be signs plastered on it telling them not to enter and stuff, right?
Yes, it is secured. Um, and there are signs, and the house has alr- it'll be in. The advertisement that the house must be demolished.
And that's why it could move to online, correct? Because of the condition of the dwelling itself.
It will have to be, the house, it, it's actually in the agreement. Um, that the house will need to be removed within sixty days.
My concern is that once it gets posted, people are gonna drive down there and start walking around and taking a look.
They can't get in.
It's all secured. All the windows are blocked up all the way.
If you gotta do mall shit anyways, right, I mean, why would you even?
There are signs from the building inspector, warning of hazards.
A little fuzzy on the inside.
The, so Brickyard right away.
It's still there.
It's still there, it is, it's still there. Um, so Eversource has completed their work. They had removed a small section of one, the north side of the fence.
It fell in.
And we have been having some, um, negotiation with Eversource. Um, on what we would like to see. Um, they originally wanted to replace a section of the fence that they dis- disturbed. Um, and we were asking for replacement at least of that whole side. And so now it seems that they've agreed, um, to replace that whole side, the whole north side. Um, but they would like a gate, so that they can get to their structure. Which is why they removed the fence in the first place. Um, easier without having to replace the whole fence again. They would pay for the gate. It would be secured. So I wanted.
Get the other side replaced? I've seen Steve fix it.
About ten thousand dollars, yes.
There's a lot of fencing over there.
There is.
Do both sides, we give you a gate.
Somebody else wants us to step into the negotiation, feel free. But I, I think, uh, you know, between, um, Kevin Brown and Jeff Blackwell and myself, I think. Um, I will update recreation and let them know unless you wanna do it tomorrow night, let them know. Um, just to make sure that they don't have any concerns over it. Um, and then we'll, we'll just draw something up as an agreement between Eversource and, and the town. That this is the way we're moving forward. I mean, technically, they only had to replace the section.
That's correct.
But they want a gate. How bad do you want a gate?
It does absolutely make sense.
It does.
So, um, you'll see here on the, on the portal, there, I wanted to share this report from the state. State came in and did an official audit, um, of the motor vehicles, um. And your town clerk's, um, office. And it was spotless. And the report on the, you know, last page really speaks volumes, I think. To the employees you have in that office. Um, and they meant, the state mentions that these are the types of individuals. That you want to see. And they really speak very highly of, um, Mrs. Brand and, and, um, Mrs. Mills. And I think that's, that's really nice. Uh, there were no issues found within the audit. I've also included the April report, uh, from the trustee of trust funds. Who was here this evening. The notice which came to you from the municipal pest management for the spraying that starts tomorrow. And the code red went out last week. Um, there's a lovely picture here of, um, a couple of our police officers. Uh, uh, one police officer and then the owner of Chick's Farm and a picnic table. So the picnic table was donated to the police department by Mike Brennan, uh, Chick Farm Woodworking. Mike comes from a family of, uh, law enforcement, and he wanted to make the donation. Uh, to the police memorial, um, during the week of.
He builds all kinds of stuff.
Beautiful table. And I have to say, on that note, if you're looking at beautiful woodworking. You need to look at the, um, flower boxes that Dave Mullin. Uh, built and his group installed them, uh, this past weekend. Uh, so now we just have to put some flowers in them. Um, Hank has, uh, let me know from the sign company that he'll be installing. Uh, the two logos, the ce-. Town seal and the police badge on the outer pillars, uh, this week. And then, of course, the gravel out front got a little delayed because our highway group's a little busy. Uh, at the moment.
So can we loop back to the mosquito spraying? Were we able to get the wreck field sprayed when you spoke with them? Okay, great.
They are on the list, and there are some, so there is, and I'm learning more about this every day. Apparently, there are letters and forms that go out, and there are some residences. That can call in or send in the form, and I only know, I received a form and I contacted. Um, municipal pet and, and said, what do I do with this? And they said, well, you send it to us. They are included, those residents are included in that contracted amount with the town. And it's generally because they have a water area on.
Jacent to the whole thing, that's why they're included.
And, and by the same rate, they can opt out, they can call us and say, we don't want. It sprayed, so it works both ways.
So are all the wreck fields on it, or just certain wreck fields?
All of the wreck fields are on it, yep.
What does code register, I understand what it is, but for the public, I mean.
So they probably, our residents probably got an email or a text, depending on how they have it set up. Um, to receive notifications. Um, we sent out a notification last week that the spraying would be starting tomorrow.
Okay, on that question, on that, is there, will somebody be unlocking the gates for them to go in and out?
They did not ask.
Well, I know the last time, I, I was part of the spraying team, when the fire department was involved, and. I saved three hours' time by just going out there, getting things going, and I escorted them around, and it got done a lot faster. So wherever that contact is, let me know.
Which gates are locked?
Get in, it's either to get into the fields, to walk onto the fields, to drive around with a, a pickup truck.
The only one that may happen would be Sawmill, right?
The other one is gonna be up at the north end of town too, you gotta get into that field. Cause you can't get around it, cause it's all brush around it. Brick, brick, brick road.
Corning, there's no real gate.
No, but they gotta get in there, there was, there was blockages before.
Just go right down the hill, if you open up the gate, you can drive right through the field. Go out the backside of it and you get to where the fire pond is, that's.
Sawmill.
Sawmill has a gate, it's the only way you get down that access road on the right-hand side. But other than that, I don't think there's gates on any of the fields.
No, but they got a fence up, you gotta get through there, and get onto the field and go around, that's what I'm saying.
I'll check with them in the morning because it may be that they have. I'll check with them in the morning because it may be that they have, ca- a lot of these places have, uh, Kevin Brown's cellphone and he's gonna be tied up, so I.
I've provided Kevin the, um, all the lock information for the rec last year, so.
Yeah.
And even if the one was locked at Sawmill, you go through the highway department, come in the backside of it and the fire road. And there's ways to get in.
You could just told everybody that.
Should I tell them how to open the locks?
Sure, go ahead. No question. Are you guys doing the school one as part of the deal?
What?
At middle, at the Griffin School?
As part of s- spraying?
Yep.
They do the fields at Griffin?
Yeah, they have the soccer programs there and stuff like that.
The fields owned by the town and technically that wouldn't be owned by the town.
I'm just bringing it up because they have, uh.
Um, I can check.
Yeah, please do.
We used to spray that one before.
LMS uses the softball field and then baseball field in the back gets used by LMS.
Yep. And we used to spray those.
And they still play Bay Ruth back there, don't they?
We don't have a Bay Ruth this year.
We don't?
No. We had fifteen kids last year and they had a hard time getting nine to show up because of all of the sports, you know, tournament teams, LMS and everything else, so.
Population growth here a little low, huh?
So, um, the IT director, um, John Brunell, um, sent me an update on some projects, uh, that he and various teams are working on. Um, so the upgrade of, um, police cruisers with speed radar units. Then the LCTV team has been working with Comcast, um, on some fiber upgrades, which was part of your last, um, franchise renewal.
Mm-hmm.
And then another project with communications, and I know this one, um, Fire's been really interested in updating the hardware on the Motorola, um, units so that Fire can hear inside Campbell, I guess. That was an issue, um, and putting some, doing some enhancements. So, uh, working with various different groups, um, Director Brunell's been very busy. So we wanted to make sure you updated on.
And that's what Fire and police, right?
Yeah, they could see each other, but they couldn't talk to each other.
To each other from one end of the building to the other.
And they said it's steel or is it steel or?
I've got blockage, I believe, in there. So they gotta go to the blockage.
But there was no signal in, in the school.
Yes, the blockage problem.
And that's, and everything else I have is non-public.
All right. Next up. Let's go into SWAT and reports. So we have, um, Rec with Mr. Weber.
So the big update is the pickleball courts are coming along nice. The base coat got painted last week. The top coat got done yesterday. They're gonna start working on the lines this week. Um, all the coring's been done for the nets to get put in. Then after that's going to be the fencing and they wanted us up and running by June third or fourth, but that's gonna be weather dependent. So I'd say somewhere, sometime before the second week of June, they should be using, usable for the whole community. Other than that, our next meeting is tomorrow, we.
Very good. Great job on those pickleball courts too. I don't know anything about it, but they look nice.
They look really nice.
All right, school facilities and conservation, Mr. Lynch.
Conservation? Oh, I see. Okay, you dumped me into both. Okay. School facilities, we met. It's just the beginning step. We're going through stuff right now. There's so many beginning factors here. Uh, we're not gonna have anything concrete right yet, but we're looking at the whole group, all, all the buildings and all. And stuff like that. So just let you go from there. As for conservation, we met, had a great time. You saw they were busy picking up trash and doing the baseball thing, everything, I mean, the, the fishing derby. Everything is good with them.
Good?
Emergency management, sorry. We didn't meet.
Well, that's a good thing. Um, heritage commission, Mr. Gannon.
Uh, we met last week out of, out of cycle. Um, new election of officers, Marion Colby now is the chair. And Mr. Frank will stay on as vice chair. And they have a couple of people that are possibly interested in joining that they're trying to recruit.
All right. Planning board, capital improvement and everything else you do, Kim.
I see. Planning board, next meeting is Tuesday, June sixth, seven P M. here at the town hall. We did meet May sixteenth. We reviewed the new impact fee methodology, the draft version during the meeting. Um, it still needs a few more items to be looked at. We discussed adding the stormwater management to the SIP plan. I think that was part of it, MS four, something like that. All right. There was conversation about adding trucks that, um, maybe we need to look at. We don't know if they belong on the SIP plan or not, so we'll research that. School items came up. Um, I'm not, they're bigger ticket items. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up. Um, it seemed to be open to even modifications on LMS and every, you know, that kind of thing. And I, I just was just questioning not just the school, but the town in general. The SIP plan seems to be gonna get really big, like a wish list. And I just wanna make sure there's a process in place where what is a warrant article versus what's gonna be in the impact fee list? So currently, what the reason I say this is, the newest methodology, it's an average of about ten thousand dollars per new single-family home to move into the area, which, you know, move into Litchfield, which is higher than usual for the area. Um, so again, I just wanna make sure, not, not everybody, not everybody just dumps it all onto the SIP plan. They actually want to go to the public to get warrant articles. I just wanna make sure what's going on there. All right, um, I'll bring up another thing. Um, I did ask Kim Kleiner to add, to look at the tax collection software if we could to get a idea of how many single-family homes we had, how many mobile homes, condexes, apartments, all of that. Um, I don't trust some of those numbers, to be honest. I think they're low just based on food drives that we do with the scouts. I, I just look at them and I'm, I'm Larry because that does roll into the impact fee calculation. So I, we wanna look at that a little more. Um, you, Kim Kleiner had told me that in the past Troy, the department heads would meet with Troy. They would say where there's gonna be a warrant article, impact fee, or they could get it out of the budget somewhere before they would come to the board of selectmen and go over that. I'm not sure what the school side does. Um, so again, that's why I'm questioning the process. I do also want to bring up, um, and let's see if I have it in right order. I think we, we, well, the planning board held off on the public hearing of the, you know, uh, impact fees because we wanna answer these questions. So I, I, I'll, I'm gonna ask, as a for a discussion, maybe we need to bring up that I appreciate NRPC's methodology and everything they did and I think it's okay. It's a lot smaller than the one we had before. Maybe the existing one answers my questions. I don't know. So maybe, I don't know if we need a second opinion on that. Just bringing that up. So Jay's methodology and formulas look okay, but again, we point to this from a legal perspective and I need to quote from it. So that's what I'm questioning. So we might have to have a conversation on whether we think his deliverable is what we really hundred percent need. I think it's a great place to start, but I do think there's maybe some more guards or process in there. Uh, the economic outreach development team, I think, was that a letter here? You had another draft for everybody. You wanted one member from each board to come forward to initiate this economic outreach team. Their initial, um, I guess, deliverable would be to come up with the way they're gonna do an outreach to the community, right? So is this, I don't know if you need anybody to approve this to go out?
If that is acceptable.
I think that's the other one you handed out.
Yep.
So we probably should start that soon rather than later. So that's what I have for, and again, I'm not saying what Jay delivered wasn't good. I like it. But I just feel there's something missing in the process. I don't want that to be a wish list. And then all of a sudden our impact fees are instead of ten thousand dollars a home, it's twenty thousand dollars a home because nobody's going to the warrant article process. That's my only concern. And maybe there, it's in there and I, I just wanna check. As far as the capital improvement plan committee, we meet Monday, June fifth at six thirty P M. here at the town hall. We will be reviewing our current bylaws and discussing the threshold for departments and, uh, commissions to put a project onto the SIP plan itself. Currently, it's over fifty thousand dollars, but what do we do for the library or maybe the fifty thousand dollar threshold will be worked out? All right. NRPC, the next full quarterly commissioner meeting is June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M. thirty, Temple Street in Nashua. They did have their annual forum on May eleventh. The topic was economic, uh, development. They really focused on housing, workforce and childcare, but housing was the number one issue. Um, I think based on the housing assessment I mailed, emailed everybody, that they believe, the state believes they need sixty thousand homes in southern New Hampshire to meet the need. However, uh, Saint Ansem's survey, I don't know if I mailed that to you yet, believes we need ninety thousand homes in southern New Hampshire of willing towns that want to participate in that. So I was upset about that Saint Ansem survey. I looked at it as a traitor, as a military strike personally. They went to the, all the zoning boards in all the towns of New Hampshire, found the weaknesses and strengths and which one developers might want to approach that allow more building and all that. So I, at the meeting, if you saw me do it, I viewed it as a.
Well, that's what I said tonight. The state itself, at the state house just went through this briefly.
So they were gender and they have one. I get it. It's different than the local agendas, but, okay. So I stepped back and I read it again, just as, mm-hmm. Now they're really saying, look at your town and look at the ones around you. Maybe point developers that way. So it's a tool for developers. It's a tool to feel better, look at your zoning ordinances. So either way, we're all trying to solve the same problem, but I think the state has to realize it might not be the local agenda either, so. Okay, so housing is number one. They need sixty to ninety thousand homes in southern New Hampshire. That's one reason I had you try to break down what we have today so we can make sure we're meeting whatever report card we're gonna be getting for Litchfield that we have so many thing, you know, types of homes covered. All right, so Memorial Day service, we talked about May twenty-ninth, step off at ten A M. And that's all I, oh, the energy commission, we have to start with that, getting that going, right? There's supposed to be two board members and I think four from the public or something. Oh, the treasurer and yourself and.
My understanding, um, is that the board, uh, school board discussed it, um, the other night after reaching out, um, and they do want to, um, have a member be on.
So I, so we have to get that rolling by warrant article time.
So I, I believe that, uh, I can send the information one more time. Um, we've already approved the energy, the formation of the energy.
Yep.
Um, committee, which is, would be a subcommittee pointing to the selectmen. Um, if the write-up and the goals and the, um, objectives are okay, then we could get it posted and start recruiting immediately. Um, so I'll, I'll send that out again tomorrow.
Please. Yep. And Kim and Steve are two, yeah?
Do we have to do anything with this letter? Do we have to approve it or?
If it's all, if the board agrees, I can send it out tomorrow, um, let them know that.
Plan, you know, to get the department head from every commission.
It's okay. I used to a lot of paper.
No, we need to approve this. We already approved the formation of the committee. I think it's good to send out.
Yep, I'll send it out.
That's all I have.
Thank everyone in advance for wanting to be a part of it. Oh, give me a mortar.
When we meet the first time, we can put together a mission statement and all the other stuff.
Yep.
Get some structure too.
I have one more thing.
You have one more thing?
Of course, I always have one.
Yeah, she do.
NRPC, um, I believe their survey is still going on, online about, uh, what you want NRP's strategy to focus on. So we wanna take input from all the departments, boards of selectmen, planning board, all of them to, to, uh, have your input.
Sure.
The planning board filled it out. Hopefully the board did. I sent it to everybody. Just, it took me five minutes. It's a, you know, rating system, you know, kind of thing. And made a couple of open-ended questions. If you could, that would be.
Send over the taxpayers too, see how they feel.
Yeah, we went on everybody too. I think there was a posting on Facebook to, uh, do that.
Yep. Oh, wow, that'd be interesting.
Yep. That's it, I'm sorry.
That's it, okay. And last is, is budget committee and we meet Thursday night. So I'll have a report for you in the next meeting.
Well, they look at you to be the last one.
Somebody's gotta go last. Might as well be me. Is there anything else that, that we need to discuss in public tonight before we go into non-public? Not? Okay. Then we have one more item. It's a non-public item under RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three comma two. A, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of ev- any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a public meeting and, two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. So we need a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
We have a motion for Mr. Weber.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Mr. Lynch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries five zero zero. We'll now be entering non-public. I have nine eighteen, Kim, for that. Everyone have a wonderful night and a great holiday weekend. And go to the parade.